City Council Regular Meeting, scheduled from May the 18th, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. If I be called or... I want to recite a prayer that I always sit in front of my desk during my career, and it was the first thing I looked at in the morning. I think it applies here tonight. Says, "My heavenly Father, as I enter this workplace, I bring your presence with me. I speak your peace, your grace, your mercy, and your perfect order into this office. I acknowledge your power over all that will be spoken, thought, decided, and done within these walls. Lord, I thank you for the gifts you have blessed me with. I commit to using them responsibly in your honor. Give me a fresh supply of strength to do my job, anoint my projects, ideas, and energy, so that even my smallest accomplishments may bring you glory. Lord, when I don't understand, guide me. When I am weary, energize me. When I am burned out, infuse me with the light of the Holy Spirit. May the work that I do and the way I do it bring faith, joy, and a smile to all I come in contact with today. And, Lord, when I leave this place, give me traveling mercy. Bless the families here, that their homes will be in the order that they left them in. Lord, I thank you for everything you've done, everything you're doing, and everything you're going to do. In the name of Jesus, we pray with much love and thanksgiving. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Assistant Chief David Hood, sir, you had a comment tonight before we get started?
Sure. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for coming tonight. I'm here on behalf of our chief, Stephen Blythe, who can't be here. I'd just like to say, this is a high emotion meeting tonight. Some of it's exciting, some of it's bittersweet. I just ask that all act like adults. Say what you want, but keep profanity down and don't threaten anybody. Let's just have a good meeting. Take it off.
Thank you, sir. Is there any on your agenda? Citizens' comments. At this time, anyone will be allowed to speak on any matter for a length of time not to exceed three minutes. No council or board discussion or action may take place in the matter until such matter has been placed on the agenda and posted in courts with law. Do I have any citizens' comments? Please raise your hand. Yes, ma'am.
I would just like to thank everybody who has served on the city council and acknowledge all those that's coming into the city council. And just my prayer is that everybody will be able to work together for a better city of Lone Star and to serve our population here in continuing on a tradition of excellence.
Anyone else? Thank you very much. Consent items, meetings of regular council meeting, April 20th, 2023. Notes, comments made, or under...
I have a comment.
Yes, sir.
I misspelled Mrs. Chisholm's name on the top of page two.
Any other comments?
I haven't had time to look over it that closely.
Thank you, sir. Do you have a motion to approve those meetings?
I make a motion to approve it.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Five reports, five one, five two, through five seven, A and D. You will note in your report that five seven, the financial reports are not there. We did not have time to update those reports, so they would not be accurate. They'll be in your next package.
How many court hearings have we had in this time period?
The last month. I don't know. The judge is not here to answer that question. And as you all know, we're working short staff. We're a little behind on some of the issues that would normally be in the support for gratis, with things being what they are. And albeit that none of the items, action items that you're going to discuss and possibly take action on tonight, have anything to do with these reports. I'm going to request if you don't have any questions about them, that we approve them in as long as reports that you do have. And go forward.
I'd like to make a verbal notation that the judge in court report is not here because of that reason of being short staffed, and we don't have a made-up report.
So five one is missing?
Yes.
Do you have any comments on the reports?
I haven't been able to look over them that closely.
All right. Thank you, sir. Do you or I, do you have a motion that we move forward?
I make a motion that we accept five one to five six, since the financial report is not here.
Five one's not here either.
Five one's not here.
And five one.
First and second to accept reports five two through five six. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
Six, election matters. Issuing some certificates of election to elected candidates. Did she call their names? Did she call your names? Please go ahead.
Do we need to pull the thing up so it shows the Lone Star Center?
Okay, there's going to be two statements that we're going to have now. I want to bring these statements to you about your oath to Statement Officer, and then the Oath of Office. If you'd like to step in front of them. I will have you to sign the documentation. I need you to raise your right hand, please. I, Sandy Andrews. Do solemnly swear. Or affirm that I have not. Directly or indirectly paid. Offered, promised to pay. Contributed or promised to contribute. Any money or thing of value. Or promised any public office. Or employment for the giving. Or withholding of a vote. At the election at which I was elected. Or as a reward to secure. Any appointment or confirmation. Whichever the case may be, so help me God. This is going to be your Oath of Office. I, Sandy Andrews. Do solemnly swear or affirm. That I will faithfully execute. The duties of the Office of the Alderman of the City of Lone Star. Office. Of the City of Lone Star. Of the State of Texas. And will to the best of my ability. Preserve, protect, and defend. The Constitution and laws. Of the United States. And of this state, so help me God. Get your signature, please. Congratulations. Okay, can you raise your right hand? I'll be reading the Statement of Officer first, and then you need to follow up by the Oath of Office. I, Keith Ryder. Do solemnly swear or affirm. That I have not directly or indirectly paid. Offered, promised to pay. Contributed or promised to contribute. Any money or thing of value. Or promised any public office. Or employment for giving, for the giving. Or withholding of a vote. At the election at which I was elected. Or as a reward to secure. My appointment or confirmation. Whichever the case may be, so help me God. Oath of Office, please. I, Keith Ryder. Do solemnly swear or affirm. That I will faithfully execute the duties. Of the Office of Alderman of the City of Lone Star. Of the State of Texas. And will to the best of my ability. Preserve, protect, and defend. The Constitution and laws of the United States. And of this state, so help me God. I'm going to do the Statement of Officer first, and then the Oath of Office after. I bring in a claim. Do solemnly swear or affirm. That I have not directly or indirectly paid. Offered, promised to pay. Contributed or promised to contribute. Any money or thing of value. Or promised any public office. Or employment for the giving or withholding. Of a vote at the election in which I was elected. Or as a reward to secure my appointment. Or confirmation. Whichever the case may be, so help me God. The Oath of Office. I bring in a claim. Do solemnly swear or affirm. That I will faithfully execute the duties. Of the Office of Mayor of the City of Lone Star. Of the State of Texas. And will to the best of my ability preserve. Protect and defend the Constitution. And laws of the United States. And of this state, so help me God.
This is your chairman.
I'll just take it from here. All right. I think next on the non-action items is seven dash one, the presentation by our text council of governments by Ray Allen. Rhea Allen?
Rhea Allen. Good evening, Mayor McLean. To the city council members, staff, and all others present tonight, my name is Rhea Allen, and I am the nine one one G I S Director of the R-Tex Council of Governments. And the reason for my presence today is the State of Texas, the Commission on State of Emergency Communications, has mandated that we get our G I S data accurate. We need to get a little background on our text council of governments. For the program that I am the director of, we do nine one one addressing, nine one one networking, and we train all nine one dispatchers in nine counties in the minority states. We do Morris County. We oversee the network operations for the Morris County Sheriff's Office, which handles nine one one calls for this country. So what we did a couple of years ago is we sent out a next generation nine one one data initiative. Nine one calls will now be routed geospatially. Okay, so no longer by a tabular format. They're basically, we'll be using a map to route nine one one calls. The state told us, at our region's authority, that we had to get our errors corrected and have a ninety-eight percent accuracy rate. We didn't have that accuracy rate, but now we're working on that two percent because we want to be at one hundred percent. We are the nine one one addressing authority in all of the rural areas, but we are now entering into what we're calling, not contracts, but interlocal agreements, with some of the cities in our area that do not have the manpower or G I S expertise in-house to help maintain nine one one addressing. So for example, when you dial nine one one from a landline, it gives us an address, the name of the person who that address is registered to, and the nine one one dispatcher sees that information and can dispatch off the information. Well, ninety, eighty-five to ninety percent of our calls are now coming from wireless numbers, right? So what it does is when a call comes in and it ping's based off of a triangulation, it's looking at the nearest address point to basically give a dispatcher the nearest address that they think that emergency is coming from. So what we want to work on is working with the City of Lone Star to first audit the addresses in the city to make sure that they're accurate, that you don't have anything out of sequence. Because we work with a third party that we have to give our data over to, and they come back and they'll say, okay, in the City of Lone Star, you have thirty people that are addressed incorrectly. You need to correct that because if there's an emergency from that location, it may misroute it, and there will be a delay in response. So for location accuracy purposes and for saving lives, we have reached out to some of the cities that we saw may not have that expertise. We just roll with forty-sixes, so we get it. Only our major, our big, big cities do have that kind of in-house expertise. So we said we could give our staff, this is William Wagner, who was our G I S coordinator, he has a team. We said, okay, now that we've reached the ninety-eight percent accuracy, if we do have the time to help our cities within our region, audit their data, get their addresses corrected, and then maintain them going forward for the nine one one database. So I know that Judy Shaddick, who's our addressing person, has reached out to Ms. Love on several occasions on different errors that she sees, and she went ahead and said, you think that this will be a good city to offer an interlocal agreement, go into an interlocal agreement with? I said, if they want us to, we will definitely do it because it's going to help us reach that one hundred percent for the state. So what we propose is letting us be the addressing authority for the state. What we would do in the event of new addresses, and we know they come few and far between and also smaller cities, we would then turn over a database which would be in like an access or Excel format that we can give to you to let you know these are the new addresses, and this is a new database, a new database upload every month that we can give you based on the nine one one data. That data is seen in your nine one one call center, so when you dial nine one one, that pops up and we're able to see it. So we just wanted to ensure that no one falls between the cracks. We wanted to work on correcting. We know that sometimes asking someone to change an address if it's wrong, it's met with a lot of resistance. We're used to it. But once you explain to people how the network works, how technology is helping aid in cutting down on response times, you'll find that they're, you know, willing to comply and change their addresses if needed. We only do it if it's just a case scenario where the state is saying it won't work, it won't be, it won't route, and it won't validate. So that is our proposal to you. We just want to know, if you want to enter into an interlocal agreement with us, it's at no charge to the city because it is still the R-Tex Council of Government's responsibility to ensure that the data is accurate. So it's like entering into a partnership to ensure that we have that data accuracy as the authority and as the city. And I'm here to answer any questions. I know some of that might sound like a link, sorry.
Couple of questions.
Yes.
Who has that authority presently?
We, we have, who has the authority to address presently?
Yes.
Or to, as the nine one one authority?
Either one.
We are the nine one one authority. That's why it's charged to us to make sure that it's accurate. That's why we get dinged if it's not. But the actual assignment of the address is under the authority of the city.
That is one of the reasons why, because of some occurrences that have happened in the two years that I've been here, once I found out about some issues that had come about, had a scenario to where we were needing, someone was asking about a nine one one address. Typically around here, it's your physical address. When I started calling around and researching it, my first call was to ATCO. I was actually told ATCO first, and that's who I called, and whenever I spoke with them, the lady was very helpful. She was, she told me that that was not the right place, that I would need to contact ATCO. But while we were talking, we pulled some scenarios up on their system, and we immediately saw something that was a hiccup. An example, which may not be the exact numbers, but you have a block area that may be of a two-hundred series of numbers, and these were manually handled in the past years and up to now. And right in the big middle of them was three hundred series numbers. And with my mom's health condition that she had these past years and stuff, I would not want my mom to be that one hundred series number. So that's why I started inquiring about it and reached out to ATCO to see what we had to do. And they have been very helpful as far as telling us, you know, what we'd have to do. They've sent paperwork back and forth. They've sent us some, some goodie bags and stuff previously when they weren't able to be here, kind of identifying some of the things. And then Rhea and I have talked again, and that's why she's here tonight. I think for the, for the city, other than it might mean some changes for some people who don't have a good current physical address that will be compatible with their system, I think it would be a wise move for the city to do this in the event of someone's loved one had a medical condition and, and you have EMS that are coming in from all other areas of town, they don't know that you live next door to Ms. Smith or Mr. Jones. They don't know those people. So if they can ping the towers, whether it be a cell phone, whether it be a landline, it's, I think it's a win-win deal for the city. And especially for the fact that it's not going to cost the city compilation of the database, the compilation of updating it and keeping it current. We have a situation right now with Huckleberries and Big Ben's. Even though there was an established business up there years ago, we cannot get their address referenced in the system correctly as far as like on GPS through like Google Maps or something like that. So we're, I've talked to the post office multiple times, they've talked to them, and if we go this route of the nine one one address, then, correct me if I'm wrong, that would fix that issue, would it not?
We'd have to do some correction there. And there's several scenarios that we could give as far as how it used to work when we were in legacy nine one one. Now we're in next generation nine one one. And because it uses the map to route the call, when you have a three hundred in the middle of a two hundred block, the map and the G I S software says, can't find it. Okay? And then it's all left on the dispatcher. So our software is meant to help the dispatcher know exactly where these calls are coming from. Because you could call and then lose the ability to speak. You know, it's several different scenarios where your officers can speak to it. But if we have that data there and the location accuracy there, it helps aid in an event like that.
Will it result in sort of an audit of where our streets are and where they are?
Yes, step one.
Because I, I've dealt with Matthew before on the county level. He probably doesn't recognize me in person just by email. In two thousand and eleven, you know, the, the state allowed, or required all counties to adopt a county map, and they published it in the newspaper because it's a common legal issue of proving a road or disproving a road. Like, I want, I want to say that's a public road, and I want you to pay it, or I don't want you on my public road, that's a private driveway. And so it'll, it will result in an audit of essentially where our streets.
It'll be an emergency communications map audit. Okay, so we don't deal with the politics of, is this an official city road? Is this an official county road? Is it a private road? We want to know what's on the ground and what it's called so we can send first responders there. So we don't have a dog in that fight, we don't have a seat at that table. So we don't call it an official county. Now, we help with the county road inventory to say, this is what we have, you can match it to help with your own audit, but ours is for emergency communications purposes only.
If you make a decision that somebody's address isn't accurate as you'd like it to be, and we enter this agreement, are they forcibly required to change their address?
We work with, we have the same problem even in the county. Well, we ought to be able to kind of, what we do is we give them all the scenarios, we let them know that they are addressing correctly. We let them know that not only can this hurt you, it can hurt your neighbor if you're out of sequence, first responders who may not be familiar with the area. I'm saying that your first responders aren't. But if I am in the three hundred block and I need to go to the seven hundred block because three oh five's in the seven hundred block, I'm not going to know to go down there because you're addressing correctly. So you can be a danger to yourself and to, you know, your neighbors as well, even visitors at your home. So we try to explain different scenarios to get them to change. If they out and out refuse, we send them a letter that we have done our due diligence. We've contacted you, and I think I make them contact four times to say that this is what's going on, and you assume the liability that's associated with that change in your address.
So they ultimately do have the option to opt out?
They do. Now, what a county can do, and I don't have a dog in that fight either, is impose fees, but that would be a sentence that you would make if they refused to do something like that, where you can enforce the order. Either way, if they are addressed wrong and they refuse to change their address, we still have to keep that wrong address on the map, it just may not geospatially route the call.
I know it's, it's, it takes about a year if you change your address for the nightmare to stop. All your package, you try and order something on Amazon, and it tells you that's not a real address because they're looking it up in a system that may be outdated. And so then you just simply can't order, and we're in a small town. I'm sure many of the people in here order online like I do because I'm not going to go to Tyler or the company to buy something.
I do, we deal with that concept, and all we can say is that our first priority is saving a life. And that's why we need this data accuracy. It is a headache with changing our address. We try to give them all of the links to everybody that they need to contact, even to Google because we get that all the time. It's not showing up on Google, especially in our rural areas. And we give them the link so they can go in and manually put it in because those data, it's my prayer that one day we will have one database that's all synced together, that's FedEx, UPS, Google, everyone, but it's not the reality. What I'm panicking here is that your nine one one call center will have a new one.
Is there any chance that the system, the new Gen Two system, will be updated to be able to map an address that's out of sync? Is that another option?
I think that in the industry, they are trying to look at different things to head that way.
A year ago, Google decided, I lived on a different street. So you look at the, the map, and it says Dogwood, but if you click my house, it says Devilwood. Not sure how that happened or how I can see.
We get those calls all the time. There is a link that you can go to, you see this something with a discrepancy in Google. And so...
Done it, made it.
Oh, really? Okay. Well, we, we send that, and we've done research, even talking to USPS sometimes, you know, people say they're not getting their packages, especially if it's a new road that goes in and it takes about three years. Well, we, we're real time, we're updating. We're updating that map once a week so your dispatchers get the new map every week. Um, and it takes them three years.
I mean, one of the issues that you're going to run into and you already have Tina addressed a little bit of it, uh, Big Ben's and Huckleberries and when they order materials to come in, their address is wrong. So, what happens is, let's say UPS brings a truckload of material or inventory to them, their address now shows somewhere over by Dollar, Dollar General. So, UPS won't change it. They'll drop it there. Once they drop that inventory there, Big Ben's can get it. It belongs to Dollar General because they have gone through there before. So, they're advocating, advocating for the city to do something because they can't get materials delivered, inventory delivered. They're having to have it, they want to deliver it to a post office box. So, you can't do that with a truckload here. So, consequently, a lot of times they don't get their materials delivered and they have to go through a whole gamut of stuff to get them delivered. So, they're advocating, that's what they're wanting is something where their addresses can be updated. Because now if you plug your address in for emergency, it doesn't send somebody there, it sends them somebody else. So, you're talking about potential liability issue at all.
And we've talked about that. Like I said, I, I've actually tried to go into that bill. Need to see if I can do something from the city aspect. I can't, I haven't got an account set up. But, she's tried as well. We've called them, we've gone to post office, like I was saying earlier. We can't get that corrected. Even though that business was in existence years ago, we're just not getting to the right point of contact or something. So, and that's two businesses. If it doesn't show the Dollar General address, it shows the cemetery.
And you've gone to USPS?
Yes, ma'am. We, we have both contacted USPS. Uh, well, I, I've contacted them locally.
Okay. Well, they have a, 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 Dallas. So, I mean, you can get together regardless if you sound interlocal or not and try to see. But, we still help the city.
Is this something that we can fix on a case-by-case basis without an interlocal agreement, an interlocal agreement bid?
It, it can be done if you have a person to do it. You get what I'm saying? So, if there's someone at the city level that can't, I mean, we still have to go through the system because they are still in your authority. Um, it'll just, it's just giving us permission to basically do this audit coming to your city. We'll be mapping the roads and telling you, we'll give you an audit of everything that's fallen out. But, if you have, and you might come back with, I don't know, we haven't done an audit on the city yet. Um, it may not be as bad as we think it is. Like I said, we're at ninety-eight percent accuracy for our whole region, which means only two percent of the whole region is in there. So, you know, the city may not come back even in areas at all. Not, it may not be a huge undertaking. But, what we are offering still is the maintenance of your, of a database that you don't already have.
And I will say from what I've been told, when Ms. Karen was here, the way, uh, addresses were assigned, say for a new structure that was going to be built in a previously wooded area that now has been cleaned off and basically was identified as res, uh, whatever they call it in the woods or whatever, uh, changing it to residential. And then, uh, the number closest to that location would be assigned. So, if you were close to two hundred series number, she may assign a two hundred and ninety-nine. But, right next to it, behind it, there may be a four hundred. So, it's, it's just not, it's back in the fifties as it is now. It's not something that's accurate, not, you know, we need to move forward. So, um, and the database aspect of it, whether it be an access database or whether it be an Excel database, either one are easily to manipulate based upon what I've dealt with. If the city's going to have that type of information readily available to them, I'm assuming it'll have names and addresses and everything identified. It, it's a dual purpose in my personal opinion.
Yes. Um, our current address databases have the names. If you have an owner and you're renting out your home, it'll have the occupants. It'll have the owner information, the occupant information, um, the address, a contact telephone number and even a description of the structure, whether it's business or... And the date the address was assigned, the date we modified and everything. Um, we have run into some issues in cities where if it was on an antiquated way of addressing, we have one oh one, one oh two, one oh three, one oh four. There's no addresses between one oh one and one oh two. But, now you put in an apartment complex or you put in a new home and there's no spaces for addresses. We have addresses and guidelines that say you need to leave X amount of spaces for future advancement. So, we're trying to think about the future too. And I try to stress to our team, you gotta think about the people that are going to be here after us. Think about that, you know, to have the maintenance because this would be, this is a living and breathing die in there. Yes, ma'am?
Okay. My husband and I are both in our seventies. And years ago, our twenty-three oh seven road was nor, normally Beasley Road. And we had canceled our house phone, so we're only on cellphone. And our cellphones really are not very good. So, how can I be able to call nine one one from my cellphone and get the correct address?
Okay. Well, um, cellphones work differently than landlines, of course.
Yes.
So, if it's a service issue with your phone period, um, then you would have to take that up with the provider, your, uh, carrier. Now, we do, as a nine one one authority, work with all of the major carriers as well. So, in order to provide service in our region, they have to certify through us and certify that their customers can call nine one one. It's an FCC rule. So, if you're seeing that you're having those problems in the rural area, I know that they're working on broadband connections and everything to get, you know, signals a little stronger. But, we can definitely contact them directly and we'll do field testing. We do that as well to say, okay, this is a spotty area, maybe you need to put another tower up or more sectors or something like that.
You had mentioned, um, the, like, if, if I own a property and I'm renting it and having the tenant's information, does that interface with like utility billing? Or how do you know who is residing in the property of this property?
We rely on the owner to call either their city official or us directly if we're in interlocal so that we can update that information. If not, it'll, the information will stay the same if we're not being updated. Like, for instance, the city of Texas County, every time they do a change with an address or they issue a new address, we're just on their mailing list. So, we automatically get that update. We update our, our GIS maps and our database.
So, you get that information from USPS?
Um, I get that information from the city.
Okay.
Now, when you change your occupant, I know you're not contacting the city to let them know that, but it would then be the, um, responsibility of the owner or their management team to make sure that information gets sent to the nine one one database.
Ma'am, can I get your name, please?
No.
Yes, ma'am. Um, when you were talking about twenty-three oh seven, that's where you live?
Darlene Freeman.
William Freeman. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. And, and to speak to your question again, I don't know if I answered it in its entirety. But, um, for instance, if a county road is, was once a number and they changed it to another name, we have what it's called?
Alias.
An alias field where we still put that name in the database.
I think it was the name first and then the county road.
Okay. Either way, we have an alias field so that they, the dispatchers will know that it was once this and now it's this and vice versa.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
So, would this cover the entire loan star zip code or only inside of the city limits, this agreement?
Um, we already cover the rural areas. Everything is unincorporated. So, it would then encompass the city as well.
Thank you.
Can you speak to the cost again?
There's no cost. It would be helping us.
Who funds your, uh...
The Commission on State American Communications. Um, is how our funding is distributed. But, it's through nine ones for one service fees that everyone pays on a cellphone bills or landline bills, business bills. That's how we do it, nine ones.
Any more questions?
Thank you for the opportunity and we'll rate your response.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, moving on to action items, uh, eight dash one. Uh, review discussion and possible action by the council to consider interlocal agreement for the city nine one one addressing with Artex Council of Revenants and the City Loan Store of Revenants under Resolution twenty, twenty-three, three nineteen. Any questions or comments?
I'd like to make a, a motion that we table this. We just, I've had this for two hours and this is like thirty pages just this book.
This is the same one that you guys were giving two months ago.
Okay. Well, the, the names need to be updated, uh, for one thing. And so, I would just like to have more time to, uh, to look at it and to update the names in the agreement.
Okay. Other comments from the board? You have to make a motion. Oh, I'm sorry.
Or, or it's a good time to discuss it, uh, if anybody wants to add or, um, anything to add or say?
Just a local agreement. Not anymore. I don't see why we table it.
I don't see that, that there's, there's any cons necessarily. But, I, I, I know personally that on South Shore myself, that I have two sets of parents that live there and have three houses apart from each other. And one of them's a two seventeen address, one of them's a three seventeen address. So, I mean, I don't see, I mean, it's taking liability off of the city in a lot of ways without a direct cost to anybody within the city. So, that's my personal.
I think it could have implications for property disputes. Uh, what's the road? What's the driveway?
It's only for communication purposes.
It's only for nine one one addressing. Aside from the few people that would actually be directly impacted, as she said about, you know, dealing with the change of address if you were one of those that unfortunately was part of that. But, I mean, for the liability would be taken off everybody as a whole for a year of inconvenience in you. I mean, I think anybody in the right mind or would agree that that would be worth it. I mean, from liability standpoint.
Would it be out of order to add something now that I said there? No. Okay. Um, I do want to add to that, um, though we do keep boundaries, um, as far as the cities and the counties go. But, for our nine one one geospatial call routing, it's just the point data, the point data. What's on that point, where that point is located and what the number is. So, we don't have anything to do as, as far as submitting data. No one can say, okay, who legally owns this? They can't use our data for any of that information. This data is already in the nine one one causings. It's already there. We just want to correct what's wrong.
In, in a lawsuit, though, anyone could use any sort of argument or data. So, uh...
But, we have a disclaimer.
Right, right.
Yes.
But, they can still use it in a lawsuit. So, there are implications to consider.
I just want to speak to the point of property disputes. Whenever you close on a piece of real estate, um, you actually close on that real estate under the legal description of the property, not the physical address. It's the legal description and also known as, AKA, the street address. So, if the street address changes, that does not change anything to do with property laws, property disputes. It's not going to be, be an issue.
We'd lived here a year and a half and my mom died. And I think if our information would have been updated and if I would have known how to do that, they would have been there faster than fifteen minutes.
And that's an unfortunate case that we do see.
It was an idea.
And I'm sorry for that. That we do see in our line of work. Um, for instance, there was a house that burned down. It was so far out in a rural area, they kept turning around because they were out of sequence. They were just out of sequence. Yes, ma'am?
I think it's a good idea.
Can we get your name, ma'am?
Oh, Teresa Patrick. I think it's a good idea and I think you also, you have to, the dispatcher. And then plus it's an update. And I think we, it's faster service. Only inconvenient, you might do, like you said, some people don't want to go through the headache of changing an address. But, like you said, some, you said somebody, you got to get owner company. You can call them and then refuse to do it, then they got to go through the list with themselves, isn't it? Yeah, that's the only headache.
And what we try to do is create a list for them. This is what you do. We create a letter so they don't incur any cost which they, let them know it was a, it would be, you know, not forced to change, it acts to change because of emergency communications purposes. But, this is not just a Artex Council of Governments regional initiative.
Yes.
It's the state of Texas and a national initiative.
Yeah. And I, and I like, and I like, I like saying. And I like if you embellish, they're not going to come out of pocket.
Sure.
Yeah. And I love that, right there.
I feel like it's really worth saying. There's legal ramifications if you don't change.
You already planned a nine one one.
I, I think it may very well be a good idea.
Excuse me. And then a motion, he seconded to table it. The matter right now is to vote on not to table it or table it. And then we can make another motion to whether you want to accept it or not.
Robert, it's a vote, is a motion, a second, then a discussion. I, I had something to add right here.
Right ahead.
Anyone who has anything to discuss. I think it may very well be a good idea, but we've had two hours for the whole book. There are a lot of important implications. I would like more time to consider it.
That's kind of where I stand too, is to, I, I wasn't here three weeks, so I, I've literally had two months, or two, two hours to look at this information. I think it's probably a good idea. I fear those that would reject the idea of wanting their address changed and there's a potential of getting fined if they don't do it.
The fines would be if you decide to fine them. If you decide to fine them.
The city or the county?
Um, the city. The city. And the county, we don't, don't fine. We are the authority, addressing authority in the county. We don't fine. We just tell, we send them a letter to let them know that you've been educated on why you should change and these are maybe some of the ramifications if you don't. And then we file that, okay? Um, what I can say is, it's still your responsibility to get your addressing accurate. You will still be contacted by us to get your addressing accurate. Or we found that people say they don't have the manpower to go through all of these steps. But, it's still the responsibility of the city to get their data accurate and get it to their council of governments for their nine one one map.
That is, if we don't go with the...
It's still, yeah, it's still your responsibility. We're just offering this service to aid and help.
Correct.
I feel an obligation to people who could be affected to have more time to consider it. And I'm not saying it's a bad idea.
I will leave cards. You can call us at any time.
Okay. We already had a motion and a second to table it. Does that, do you want to take a vote?
If everyone's done, if everyone's, if everyone's done discussing.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Make a motion that we accept the proposal and agree.
A second, then.
I'm noted this, I'm sorry. I'll get it down as we prepare. Okay. Okay. I'll, uh, take a vote on this. We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor? Yes.
This is all in favor?
We got three, four, and two again.
You have to ask.
All opposed? Let's try this again. Uh, moving on. So, the motion carries. Uh, eight dash two, review discussion and possible action by the council to select a mayor pro term for the term of one year.
I don't know. Same difference, isn't it? I don't think it would matter.
You did what? You did make a motion?
I think, so we discussed it. Now, do you want to do it again? Yeah?
Uh, take a vote, uh, all in favor?
Or, or for a discussion. Does anyone else have anything to add?
Ava. Any comments? And you got a first and a second for Mr. Jerry.
And so, now, does anybody have anything to add? It's not.
So, basically, right now, you've got a motion made by Tony to keep Mr. Jerry Chisholm in as mayor pro temp. Cindy seconded that. Keith made a comment after the second had been made that he would consider himself for that position. No, no vote has been made either way.
Do you want to take a vote on this?
Just as well. I don't have anything else to, to add.
All, all in favor?
Excuse me?
Tony made the motion for Jerry. Cindy seconded. We need to vote on that motion. Can we vote on that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
All against?
May.
Motion carries. Uh, eight dash three. We're moving past that. It says it's not here. Move on to eight dash four. Review discussion of possible action by the council on city bidding policies.
Thanks for coming up.
Uh, we want to enter. Comments or discussion on?
I make a motion to table eight four. Or, I guess he's going to be asked to be recognized to speak.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, I thought I would give you a, a brief update on what's in your packet. As you'll see, the first document that is, it was in there, it's the one that has four paragraphs on it. Two months ago, we discussed in a council meeting about the fact that we did not have a procurement policy for the city. Uh, at that point in time, Cody volunteered to put together a policy for the city. Last month at our council meeting, what you see in the four paragraphs on it is what was presented to the council. And when the comment was made that it wasn't a policy, the comment was made by him, well, we can just follow the state guidelines. In the interim, and I already had it at that council meeting, but I wasn't called on, I drafted a policy that you will see in your packet right now. Uh, that policy follows about 26 cities in the state of Texas that are about our same size. Procurement policy follows the state guidelines, and it's been passed by numerous cities. So, uh, I think if you will review that, it meets all the guidelines that are needed, follows all the thresholds for the dollar amounts, the bid process, contacting and underutilized businesses, and everything that the state guidelines outline. So, I'd like to submit that as a procurement policy for the council to consider and vote.
So, uh, I, I was making a motion to table this, because it's a lot. We've had two hours. But I will comment that we have three historically underutilized businesses in Morris County that we have not contacted in the past. And the law requires us for a contract between 3,000 and 50,000 to, uh, on a rotating basis, contact two historically underutilized businesses. It does not refer to accepting a bid based on that, but that you have to contact and, and give people who've met the requirements and filled out the paperwork to be on this list, the opportunity to bid. Uh, in the past, we have not done that. There's only, there's only three in Morris County. And so, um, anyways. There's three people.
What three businesses are those?
Charles Evans was the, I believe is his name. Is the most relevant to, uh, the work we've had done. There's another, I believe he's listed in Omaha. I think all three people are listed in Omaha. But it's on the state comptroller's website, and that's what the law says. You have to go to the state comptroller's website, you have to fill out paperwork, you have to... Like, it, it refers just to your own county. And so, if, if you don't have any historically underutilized businesses in your county, then you're exempt from this part of the law. It's a very reasonable law, in my opinion, because it's just saying, contact them so that they know, that they can bid on a project. We have not, nor has any of the other three cities contacted, uh, these people, and they've had bids, when they've had projects between 3,000 and 50,000 dollars. But, uh, like I said, we just got this. Uh, I'm making a motion to table this, until they've had more time to look at it.
I, I think you definitely need a policy. I think a policy is a good idea, but, I mean, five minutes, there, there's a lot of data here. I can't put something in place and make a policy that we're bound to on a five-minute notice. So, I, I would second.
So, we don't have a policy?
Well, we haven't been following the law. Just following the law would be an improvement. What's that? What's that?
We have followed the law.
Have we contacted Morris County's historically underutilized businesses? We have not.
Cody, we have gone out on the website and contacted different people. We've already gone through this.
There's three that have not been contacted, ever.
One of those three is a bakery.
And the law says you do not differentiate.
I was told at our last meeting, that we should contact all three of them. And I said, so you're telling me if we have a contract for construction, we have to contact the bakery?
That is what the law says.
One of the three that he's talking about is a bakery.
Yes.
And?
So, we would be making the improvement just to follow the law. We're not going to be another month without a policy. Have you read this? I mean, we can't read this.
I understand, I've read it, I'm just saying, you were gifted this.
I was what?
You was gifted this last month.
I'm sorry, what?
You was gifted this.
Gifted, okay.
Do we have a motion?
We can take it, and then make a decision on it next month, but, so you want to read it?
Can I, Jake, one more thing? At the end of our council meeting last month, I approached Cody and asked him if he was willing to sit down during this interim period between now and last meeting to go over this, so we could come to an understanding, be in agreement. So, we brought this policy, talked to everybody, we made agreements, and he told me no. So, he may not have time to read it now, but he has ample opportunity to review it in a meeting and decline to do so.
This is not an emergency. There's no rush on this. There's no reason to implement a new citywide policy on something that I personally haven't been able, haven't had the time to read. I don't, I don't see a reason to rush this. There's state regulations in place that tell us how to do bidding. This just simplifies it, and that's a good thing. But there's no reason to vote something in that nobody's, or that I haven't had a chance to, to look at.
And, and I said that we should contact all three historically underutilized businesses in the county for every project, between 1,000 and 50,000. That is a policy. I was told that's not a policy. And the law requires you, it says you do not differentiate. But, when I called him, just to verify, he said he would have bid on the basketball court, uh, job, for example.
Did you call the bakery to ask about that?
No, I didn't.
And I'm just curious.
I called the one that said construction.
Contact all three personally. Like I said, I'm new to this. I don't know, but, I mean, at what point would the bakery get tired of you calling them, asking them to bid construction projects or city projects? You know, at what point has it become a nuisance for them? I get that's what it says, but...
If that's what the law says, we have to follow it. If the bakery doesn't want you contacting them, they can remove them from the list.
The policy that I proposed...
Charles Evans never was contacted, and said that he was. He never was contacted by anyone.
In the city of Omaha, they've all...
Tried to call him, just now, so he could, I put him on speaker, let you hear what he had to say.
I recorded, obviously, because I record everything. When I called him and asked if anyone had ever contacted him, and he said no.
Someone called, and then give their name. That's what he said.
Well, I can play the recording for you.
I don't want to hear it.
Of course.
Okay, so we have a motion to, yes, sir.
And, and you're right. Just so, just to be, so they can review the policy. I'm fine with that. But I'm just saying that they had an opportunity to review this and do this.
I have it. Okay, I'm sorry.
I'm not meeting, I'm not meeting with people.
And table this, and then just take it on to, to the next meeting.
I'm not meeting with other city council members outside of open meetings. Furthermore, uh, I had proposed a policy, it was rejected, so we knew where we stood on that. So, there we are.
We'll just table this to another meeting, so they have an opportunity to read it.
Cody's making a motion to table, does someone second it?
And all in favor, if they want to the next?
I'm sorry.
All ready for? Four in favor of tableing to the next meeting? All against?
Are we voting right now? Four, yes.
Okay, moving on to eight dash five. Review discussion of possible action by the council on the final resolution for Lone Star Concrete Technologies as discussed with legal counsel. Questions?
This is pertaining to the basketball court situation. And I think that Rudy probably could talk more about it as far as, uh, what would be discussed. But I know we have contacted legal and discussed the circumstances. At one point in time, the EDC made an offer to them. And the council, it was discussed that the council cannot do anything until they were, until we were approached, or if we were approached, and we were. And I'm going to let Rudy go forward with it from there.
Okay. Back up to the first, you can even go to the background before we get to where we're at now. Uh, we bid the project to resurface the basketball. We initially bid that in 2021. Okay? At that point in time, Lone Star Concrete Technologies came in, who is a 50% minority-owned business, and bid the contract at 40,660 dollars. And nobody else bid the contract. We told them at that point in time, we did not want to enter into that contract. We wanted to table it for a while, because we wanted to make sure that we had everything we, we needed in place to do it. So, we tabled it, and in this last summer, in 2022, it took a while to finish. We reached out to three different entities, four, actually, there was five. Three of them responded. Two of them were over 30,000 dollars. And Lone Star, Lone Star Concrete Technologies came to our meeting, and we asked them at our EDC meeting, we asked them again, do you need to adjust your bid? This is the time to do it, we're putting this... They said, no. We're still with the 20,660 dollars to resurface the basketball. So, what? We accepted their bid. We put a contract out there with exactly what was supposed to be done. So, we were supposed to strip the basketball court. We were supposed to fix the cracks, take all the weeds out, seal the cracks, put a tape on the, the basketball court, and then come in with a one-eighth inch, like an epoxy. And put a profit, they're supposed to make it stronger than this contract. That contract was due on November 1st. On, on the Monday after that, which was November the 5th, there was a money launderer, Tina, calling me on the phone, and she said, do you know anything about this invoice that I got? And I said, no, I don't. She said, well, I just received a final invoice from Lone Star Concrete Technologies, stating they want their money, because they finished the project. And I said, the way that I know, I've contacted everybody on EDC, I've always contacted them. Well, I was up there, and to say the least, it was not good. So, I called Garrett Williamson, who's the person who came and visited with us, and I said, can you meet me up here? He said, yeah. We met on Wednesday morning. And he walked out there, there were still materials that they had not used strong oil with it. I mean, it was really a mess. Anyway, he got there, and I said, okay, I have issues. And he said, what? I said, well, number one, you didn't complete the job. No, we didn't. I said, no, but look at it. I said, the cracks are, there, there are no way they're sealed up. I took pictures of everything. I said, you didn't go all the way to the edge of the basketball court like you said you were working. Now, you can walk out there with a knife and chip, the chip off of it, so you didn't put an act of seal on it. And there was a place on one side of the court that had a half moon that was about 24 inches. And I said, and look at this. I said, what caused this? He said, well, we were working on the other side of the basketball court, and a kid came up here bouncing a ball while we were working on there. And I said, so what you're telling me is you didn't put any tape or anything up saying you're working on? Well, that's not our responsibility. I said, okay. I said, well, what about this other stuff? Well, you know, we can't fix that. And we completed the job, I can show you that. The problem to me was, well, that's what I get for getting involved in this list, expletive term. And I said, all right, I'll come and fix it. So, uh, his wife, who is a woman, called me on the phone, and wanted to discuss it. And I talked to her approximately 45 minutes on the phone. And I said, you didn't do the job that you said you were going to. It's not in the contract. Number one, something as simple as putting a star back in the middle of the basketball court, which we had before you got started, you didn't do that. It doesn't say that in our contract. I said, ma'am, we didn't sign your contract. You signed ours, and it's in it. Well, we're not coming back up. And I said, well, we're going to give you your other 10,000 dollars. Your needs, we have it. It's, we've been allocated, it's been approved, and we're not giving it to you until you do the job. Well, went on into December, and she contacted us again, and encountered this, and she said... She told us, she said, well, you don't understand, we're a minority business, and we're a small business. And I said, well, that's one reason we got the contract. And she said, well, we have five kids, and it's Christmas time. And I said, ma'am, Melissa Keenan. And I said, that's not our problem. I'm sorry, that, that, this is a business deal. We need to get this done. She said, well, the only way we do it is if you pass what you lost, and then pass another 10,000 in additional material. And I said, no, you don't have to. So, to, to get rid of them, the EDC voted, you know what? Let's just give them 2,000 bucks, so they'll go on, and we'll get somebody to do it right. Well, they never responded. About two months ago, they came back to us, and they said, no, we don't want two, we want six. I said, you're not getting, you know, they don't win, so that happened. We brought it to the council. Some of the individuals who are on the council now said, let's just don't do anything that'll go away. I said, if that's what you want to do, you voted that way, that's what we'll do. Council voted, passed it, nothing was done. Well, guess what? It didn't go away. Their attorney contacted us about, no less than a month ago, and wanted to know, well, where does the resolution stand? Well, everybody's on the EDC, does not want to pay them another nickel. Period. That, just get that. I said, I'm not doing anything. We talked to our legal counsel. So, we got on the phone with our legal counsel, and he said, well, he said, here's the issue. He said, the contract is so small, that you're probably not going to get anything out of it. It's probably going to cost you twice as much to fight it, sue them, as it is to give them the 2,000 dollars, if that's what y'all want to do, and go on their way. I said, well, I'm still not comfortable with that, so we, you can, we've been into it several times. So, I had a conference call between her lawyer, our lawyer, Tina was in the room, and me on the phone. And I said, you don't seem to understand. We don't want to sue anybody. All we want is the contract to be fulfilled, then to come back out, take the material off that they have on there, and fix it properly. After that, we'll cut them a 10,330 dollar check, and they can go on their way. And he said, well, they're not willing to do that. So, Stan, our lawyer, our attorney, said, you know, it's going to cost you a lot more to fight it. And I said, you don't understand. 10,000 or 20,000 dollars to us is much as a million dollars to a bigger city. He said, Rudy, I get it. He said, I'm dealing with a 500,000 contract in Dallas right now, and they're in the same situation, and I'm giving them the same opinion. And he said, you have to understand, sometimes you get a bad contract. And there is nothing you can do about it. Now, my opinion on that is, you sue them and you go on with it. But, that's not what he thinks, he, he thinks it would cost us more. So, if we do that, and he, and he told me on the phone, they don't have the money to fight you. So, you're not going to get anything out of it. They do not have. So, I said, okay. Now, you see the settlement release agreement in front of you that I'm bringing to council? If council wants us to pay them the 2,000 dollars and go on, we'll do that. Okay?
Rudy, settlement agreement is not in the package.
Okay. But this is the relea, the release agreement, it's not included in the... So, it's the, yes, ma'am, it is in there. And the thing about it is, is council will have to vote on it and approve it to get the 2,000 dollars approved. If that's not what they want to do, then you tell me if you want us to take the legal action with it. I guarantee you, it'll probably cost us 20, 30,000 dollars. I'm not opposed to that. I'm just saying, be ready, because we may not get out of it, what we put into it legally, and then we'll be out another 10, 15,000 dollars. So, it's in the council's, you know, if you guys make a decision, we'll go with whatever y'all say.
If we do not pay the 2,000 dollars, and legal action is taken, and they win, we...
If we do not pay the $2,000 and legal action is taken, and they win, we pay our fees and their fees, that being said, the cost added is no paid.
You take it the other way around.
Sorry, did you say if we won, we pay their fees?
If they, if we did not win, we have to pay their lawyer fees.
So I thought they were unwilling to accept the $2,000, but you're stating this agreement that we don't have says $2,000.
They are, they want six, and we said, no. Their attorney came back to us and told us, well, no, I take that back, our attorney told us that they will take the two. If we was given the agreement, they will take the two, and all we said, no, we'll be free and clear, there will be no liability on anybody's part, it's just a done deal.
How did our, how did our attorney come to that? Did, was it an agreement between their attorney and ours?
I, I believe that was probably true, that that's what, because when I talked to our attorney after this last meeting, he told me, he said, that's what he told me, their attorney says, they're not, they don't have the money to fight this. And I said, well, all we wanted to do is come back out and fix it. I mean, they were trying to blame it on the rain, they were trying to blame it on everything. And I said, we're not gonna sue anybody, we just wanted to come out and do it right to make it the way it should be. You know, we have a $10,333 check, of course, we don't have that check now, but we have the money in here, to pay them for doing the job right, and they're not willing to do it, so that's what we're, very frustrating, very frustrating for all of us now.
I think we have to be careful setting a precedent that the city will roll over to anybody for doing anything.
I'm not disagreeing with you.
That we have to be very careful.
I'm in agreement with that, but there, you know, whatever y'all decides what we'll do. I mean, I don't know if you're willing to, first, to go back and tell our lawyer to move forward, and if we don't win, then suffer the consequences. My, my personal opinion, and you know how opinions are, is that with all the, when I talked to their attorney on the phone with our attorney, he acted like some of the information we gave him, he hadn't heard before. Because he told me, he said, well, some, you know, there's two sides, I said, I understand there's two sides there, but I said, I'm just telling you, we have documentation, we have, we have everything we need to back up our, and substantiate our court. Well, I'm gonna talk to them, okay? So that's what he said back, and our attorney said, you know, they just want to take the two and go on with their business, and so, that's where we're at, that's what's in your packet, now it's up to y'all to make this.
I think we could potentially approach a different attorney and maybe address a lawsuit, that even if we win a judgment for $10,000, knowing good and well we'll never get it.
I agree.
And we pay our attorneys and wash our hands of it.
Yeah, and it's like he said, you know, and I, as bad as we try sometimes, and I think this is with anybody, I don't care whether you're building houses or what you're doing, you get a bad contract. Now, guess what? As far as I know, when this happens, they will be all over, the BBB will be contacted, we will do everything in our power to make sure that they do not get another contract, okay? Especially with somebody in this area, but we can only do so much. So, we're not gonna, we'll give them a bad reference, we'll do, call the BBB, whatever we have to do, so, other than that.
Can I clarify, you think we need to get another lawyer? Is that what you said?
Yes, that's, that's what I would do.
Outside our, our current legal counsel that we use?
As in a new city attorney?
Yes. Even if we don't, even if we don't.
Well, the reason why he said, as Rudy stated, it would cost more to go to court on it, and he said, it's not gonna be something that you can guarantee the outcome of.
Sure. No word, yes.
And it will not go to small claims court, it will go to the next step up.
Sure.
Because I've already confirmed that with them.
So you would rather incur $10,000 to a proven point?
Yeah.
No, it's not a proven point, it's to set a precedent that the city can't be just reached and abused.
Well, the city, the city.
Offered the $2,000?
Check references.
But it was rejected, right?
No, it wasn't rejected, it just wasn't accepted.
I'm a member of the economic development committee, and I'd like to know whose money you're spending. Are you spending the EDC, no?
Any dollar that comes out of the city is a taxpayer dollar.
Are you spending EDC money, or are you spending the city's money?
Taxpayer.
It's one of the same.
Oh, so we got a school up here on top of the hill that we funded.
It's not on the agenda.
Yeah, it is. You didn't answer my question, whose money are you using?
The taxpayers. $100 in and out of the city are taxpayer dollars.
What has actually been proposed, what is being proposed here?
$2,000 to.
To pay them $10,000 for this?
$2,000.
$2,000.
That was offered because.
And be done.
And be done.
And they rejected it?
No, they.
Now, they've come back another drink for $2,000.
Their attorney said that would be acceptable.
But if their attorney said that they don't have the money to fight it, that is malfeasance at the least. Like, if their attorney is revealing their financial position that way.
They've already obviously hired an attorney at this point.
Consultant an attorney.
The initial conversation in the months ago when this occurred, because of the dissatisfaction with their performance, the EDC discussed it quite extensively on how to proceed. If we could have, correct me if I'm wrong on this, if they could have walked away and been done with it, they would have loved to have done that, but in the discussion that they had.
If who could have, sorry?
The EDC, but the business wanted the remaining $10,330 as was. I think you probably went up there and saw it, I saw it the next day, and it's horrible. And the only thing that they wanted to do was patch up what they had already done, which was even gonna make it worse because it's gonna be discolored, and they acknowledged that it would not match. They acknowledged the fact that there were gonna be some variations, and that more than likely it's gonna look worse.
This coat doesn't stick like it is, putting another layer on it, it's not gonna adhere to it.
The, the problem with it was, is they, she came in to meet with us, she said, well, we'll come back out and, and repair it. And I said, what does that mean? Does that mean you're gonna come and take off what you've done and redo it right? No, that means we'll come back out, swap some more paint on it, put some more, and it'll be like it is, it won't change anything, it'll just be, and I said, that's not acceptable. So we, that's what we told them, we're not letting you do it. So, anyway, that's where we're at, and whatever council decides, that's where we're going. I don't think anybody, you can ask anybody on the EDC, I don't think anybody who's looked at it is happy with the way it turned out, but, you know, I don't know what happened to you take other than this, so.
So there's a settlement agreement here somewhere?
The deal is, Cody, you know, we, they offered $2,000 at first.
We offered $2,000.
EDC offered $2,000 at first, but settle it, get done, get it over with. They didn't want that, they wanted 6K. We talked to legal, legal's like, you know, there was no way, if you're gonna pay 6K, you might as well pay 10K to have them come back up and try to patchwork it, which was not gonna fix the issue, so we didn't want, there wasn't any other money wanting to be spent. So, for the longest, as y'all presented, it was discussed here in the council about the fact of just letting it sit idle, well, it sat idle for about a month, and then I received an email with an ask of what was going on. We contacted legal and discussed it with them, and the fact of the additional cost. Anything that was taken, I mean, $2,000 is gonna be the cheapest way out. And the only thing that may have been done differently is offered the 2K with a limitation of 15 days, 30 days, or whatever, and it was one of those learning curves, you know, you'd think that you would have gotten a reaction to it, which we did, we got a counter of 6K.
If, if we're to believe that, that they don't have the money to go to court to fight it, then, and it, it costs more to sue than to be sued. And, you know, if you lose, it, it's not a guarantee that you're going to pay attorney fees either, but.
We'll have to pay attorney fees no matter what if we go to court.
Right, but if we win, they could pay our attorney fees.
If they don't have any money, though, they're not gonna pay our attorney fees, so we're still gonna be able to.
Right, but if they don't have money to go to court, then why pay them the $2,000? I don't think they're gonna sue.
How much have we paid so far in attorney fees to get to this point?
I can't tell you.
10,000, yeah. It's all been telephone conversation, well, no, I take that back, we sent our attorney, I have a, I can show you if you need a brief, a folder, this thick, that has all the documentation, all the emails, all the, all the contracts, all the pictures, it has everything. We sent that to our attorney, and we said, and, and we, I was pretty upset when we talked to him on the phone, did you hear that? At what point, if you're telling me a small town, and this is a small contract, at what point do we say, what good does it do to have a contract? What good does it do us to have a contract if you're gonna tell us that we have no recourse on a $10,000 contract that they signed to come back and fix what they messed up? And that was my whole point, and I never, this is really a bad subject with me, you don't even have.
Well, I just, I would like to make a comment that I don't, I think it's terrible advice that our city attorney that we're paying is gonna tell you that if, if we win, or if we lose, we're gonna have to pay their, their legal fees, that just blows my mind that they're.
That's in, that's in their contract, that was in their contract that they supplied to us.
But they signed our contract, we didn't.
Yes.
So that's where I'm, the variance here.
And you know, what's so bad about it is, when I, when I addressed that with her about them signing our contract, I said, we're paying something, I said, that's just like the star in a little basketball, we didn't sign to put that. I said, yeah, she said, that's not our contract, I said, we didn't sign your contract, you signed ours, look at it. Oh, it is in there, so, they didn't even know what they signed when they signed.
So at this point, we can either agree to just pay the $2,000, wash our hands, and be done and move on, or we can agree to spend more taxpayers' money and fight it at the risk of never recouping it, so, I mean, personally, my opinion, that's it.
We do have another option, and I know I'm gonna get some hate from this, but an attorney sending an email saying, what are you gonna do, is not a lawsuit. We could still set this out and wait till they actually serve us a lawsuit, and then we defend ourselves, and we can countersue. If that prevents us.
At which point that guarantees you having to go to, borrowing more legal fees, rather than just paying the two grand and just being done and washing your hands.
But if we go sue them, which I don't think we are.
You're not gonna leave them on a turnip field.
If we sue them, we're gonna, we're gonna incur costs. If we just wait, then they may, this all may be a bluff. I mean, I can hire a attorney to write a letter for a couple hundred bucks.
The thing is, the EDC offered the 2K to settle it and be done with it. The EDC didn't rescind it, the EDC didn't put any stipulation time constraints on it, that offer stayed open. They countered with 6K, we did not want to do that. I think the least of, if, if you go down the path of not doing anything on it, you're out expenses again because you're still gonna have to do some things with legal. Whether it's with the current lawyer or somebody else, you're still gonna have to do things with legal.
And how much time are we taking to doing, going over this and doing it out, I mean, how much time? Yes, ma'am.
If we go ahead and pay the $2,000, it's a done deal, and we can move forward and actually make, get other contractors to come in and actually fix it.
It's a, it's a done deal, except for the reputation that we as a city get that you don't have to fulfill your contracts, that they'll never do anything about it, so just come in and do some work, and we'll get paid.
You said, you said we wrote a, a letter without a date or a timeline, and now you're talking about a $2,000 settlement, right? You said it was a learning, learning mistake.
No, I, we didn't write a letter, we offered them $2,000, we didn't write.
Had we offered, we didn't do it in writing?
As far, the, the legal did, we didn't. Legal presented them with the fact that, you know, we would offer 2K once they, once they.
But not in writing, or?
Yes, it was in, we provided it for their attorney, or to them, that we offered the 2K, this was back in January, I believe, you sent them.
Do we have this documentation?
Yeah, well, I don't have that copy of the letter where our attorney sent that to them, but I'm sure we did.
And so now you're talking, now you're talking about a counteroffer that's a settlement, that's what you're talking about? Because there, there's nothing here that I found, like a settlement or anything. If we made this mistake that we sent an offer without a, you know, a deadline or something.
What I gave you in your pack, what I gave you in the documentation you have, there, she, there's a settlement and a lease agreement, that is what our attorney typed up and sent to us, saying, if this is what you want to do, send it to them, they will accept it, and it will be a done deal.
On December 13th, the EDC discussed that communication between the concrete work owner and Mr. Dudley, and we amended the contract to pay the $2,000 and for them to walk away. And not, because they had originally said that we would have to pay them an additional $10,000 for supplies to redo it, but they didn't do it. So that was December 13th.
17th, 16th or 17th, somewhere in there.
I thought.
That's when we had a special meeting.
Uh, economic, 12/22, 12/22?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
So we involve.
The 13th of December is when we got the email, maybe.
That's correct.
From them, and then we had a special meeting on 12/22. So that is when we amended the contract to get to them.
We didn't, we didn't really amend the contract, we just said, this is what we'll do, you know, because we're not gonna let you come in.
I think there's too much word of mouth of he said, she said, and we don't have a lot of legal documentation of any of this.
If, if, we, we, I've heard just now that our city attorney contacted theirs and, and offered the $2,000.
The EDC offered the, the.
Through the city attorney, they contacted.
They were offered $2,000 to settle it, and let's walk away, and they walk away, nothing else be paid out.
And you said it was a, a learning curve that we didn't have like a timeline?
We probably should have put a stipulation or a timeline on it.
But our city attorney should have, really. And so I hadn't, I don't see any settlement here that we're supposed to be voting on, I'm not gonna vote on a settlement. Is, you say it's in this packet somewhere?
How do you, how do you consider us to proceed then, Cody? Because we take, we waited, we lost a month when we didn't take any action, and they followed back up and, way they wanna make a settlement.
So you're telling me that, that I should vote for a settlement?
I'm not telling you anything about how you vote.
No, but I mean, where is it? I'd like to at least know where it is.
This is, the EDC offered $2,000 on to settle this and be done.
Through our attorney. But, but what's proposed here at eight-five is a settlement of $2,000, which is a written agreement, and I don't see it. It's not in the packet, if it's in this thing that was just handed out after we sat down. And I mean, I, I'm not an attorney, I can't glance over a legal document. If it's here, what page is it on?
And I don't, I couldn't wrong that the EDC group voted to agree to pay $2,000.
Yes, we did, you said, you said for the 20 second, that's when we had the special.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm in property management and ownerships, and I do thousands and hundreds of thousand-dollar contracts every day. This has happened in big companies. Now, we can sit here and wait them out, but you know what, it's gonna make them a mistake. You get bad contractors in every city and every town and every state. Okay, yeah, you picked a bad contractor. Be done with them, pay the $2,000, be done, get a decent contractor in here, check their credentials a little bit better, find somebody you can depend on and use them from now on. But sitting down here and saying, let's table it, table it, table it, isn't it gonna make it better? It could make it worse, those people could have more money from a family member that's gonna pay their attorney $5,000. We will lose, and we will owe them more money, than the $10,000 that the contract sets.
I can't, I can't vote to approve a settlement I've never seen. Even if everything you say is correct, I can't vote to approve a settlement I've never seen.
I'm just saying, you're, you're guys are gonna lose money.
I'd like to make the motion that we table this, and that we, the council gets all of the documentation on all the interactions with the lawyers, so that we know what in the world is going on here.
At the very least, a settlement.
There's emails going around, and I need to know what's really happened, and so he said, she said, going back and forth.
Oh, I second the motion to table it. For more discussion, did you, were you gonna say something?
No.
So Keith made a motion to table it, Cody seconded it, is there a motion to proceed forward?
With tabling it.
So now we need to vote, unless we have more discussion.
Okay, vote agree.
Okay, do you, all in favor of tabling it?
Say aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
All in favor of not tabling it?
Aye.
So, so we're not tabling it right now, because the, the motion failed, so, so now what?
We need to have a motion to, how do y'all want to proceed?
I'll make a motion to that.
But it's a settlement, right? It's a written settlement. We've never seen it.
Right in our agreement, that this is the file, no more or nothing, we can fix that and all of it.
But we're not just paying $2,000, we're, we're, we're agreeing to a settlement, which we've never seen.
Yes, but it could be grown up like that.
But it hasn't been, or, or I've told.
I'm just, I'm saying, it can be, we talking about, they haven't paid it either, so it can be drawn up, as you say, the way you're saying, and end it right there.
Okay.
Because it's better than us paying $6,000 if they come back.
They said the settlement was already written.
Okay, well, still.
And we haven't seen it. So I can't vote to approve a legal document that I haven't seen. That seems like dereliction of duty. That's her job.
Yeah, all in favor of the $2,000 settlement?
Come on, come on, come on. We ain't gonna do this. We just ain't gonna do this.
Four, okay. Or three, four, and against?
Me.
Motion carries. Okay, moving on to 8-7, review discussion possible action on repairs to the pier located at City Park.
8-6.
I'm sorry.
8-6?
8-6, let's go back. 8-6, review discussion possible action on placing new basketball goals at City Park. Comments or comments?
Okay. This was, this contract was put in place at the same time the basketball court was. We went out and you'll see in the packet that I gave you, we went out and contacted companies who actually provided basketball courts for outdoor facilities. The cost of just the goals was gonna be probably anywhere from, you'll see them in there again, they're anywhere from $3,000 to $4,000. Well, we discussed it as an EDC and in our opinion, those goals probably will be torn up in about a week and a half because they'll be hanging on the garden. They'll be doing everything. So we contracted out, contacted all these people, and RCC said, "I can build you goals that they will not tear down. I will construct them out of steel. They will not be able to pull them down. They can't tear them up till after 30 years." So the EDC voted to have that done. We put that contract in place in December. Contract price of $4,450. Once we entered into the issue with Longstar Concrete Technologies, we put a hold on it because we didn't know what was gonna happen with them doing the service on the basketball court. Since the council has voted to pay that $2,000, we need to extend, they already have the goals built. They built them when we had the contract before. They haven't been painted and installed because pending what we did, what y'all did tonight. So what we need, all this is, is we need to extend that contract through June 30th to give them time to paint those goals, put them up at the basketball court so the kids can go ahead and start playing, okay? They can play on a basketball court when we put the goals up. They can't tear them down until we figure out how we wanna approach, or if we even wanna approach having the basketball court redone in its entirety, okay? So to give them an ability to play, we just need to extend this contract, go ahead and get it finished. Get them put up. This is just a date extension. You can see on the back of the contract, there is a date extension and it hasn't been signed yet because it hasn't been agreed by council. But what you will see is it says there is no change in scope of work. All there is is a date change, okay? That's all it is. No monetary addition, no nothing, just, just the change in date to June 30th. And that's the reason we're extending it to June 30th is weather permitting. You don't ever know what's gonna happen. So they're anticipating having them wait before then, but just in case whether they don't wanna get to a point where we match, but they say, "Oh, we got extended."
But you've already signed this contract?
Contract was signed in your packet. You have to make the sign on December 16th.
The first two pages here, there's a signed contract with no date. The first two pages here, the second page, there's a signed contract with no date.
That's your amendment.
Yeah.
Uh-huh. Which is a contract, and it's a signed contract with no date.
No, there is a signed contract. If you look at.
The next five pages is a second contract.
November 22nd, 2022.
Right. The November 22nd contract.
Now, the other one that's in there for the extension has not been signed because I didn't want to sign it until council approved. Once the council.
What is this?
Extension, it will be signed in the morning.
What is that?
The extension.
But it's signed. What is this autograph? It looks like a signed contract.
It's signed, it's behind a, it's a sign with no date because we're waiting till after the meeting.
So it's a signed contract and we're gonna date it later?
No, that is the extension on the date. I did not approve, but council approves it. Once council approves this, according to June 30th date, in the morning, I will have the contractor sign it and I will con, I will sign it, which means that's an official extension from June 30th.
What he's saying, really, what he's saying is the contract is signed, that we got a copy of, even though there's not a date signed here, it is signed. He's just saying, he's recognizing it as a signed contract.
No. Doesn't go into effect until council approves it, the date put on it.
I'm not a lawyer. I'm not a contract expert, but I mean, it's a signed contract already.
But the whole idea is just to extend the date. Correct. I make a motion to.
No change in scope of work, no change in dollars amount.
Yeah, I have a second. I'd love to extend the date.
I have a second. We've already paid the money.
Yes, of course.
Take a vote on extending the date. All in favor?
Aye.
Against?
Against. It's already been signed. Can you sign a contract later? I have no idea.
Moving on to 8-7. I don't know. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
Cody asked the question, "Can you sign a contract and date it later?" Contract's actually not valid until it's executed and the execution is determined by the date. So I have to take contract in law every two years to keep up with my real estate license, and that's just the way the state of Texas looks at it.
Okay, 8-7, review discussion possible action on repairs to the pier located in the City Park.
I was gonna, excuse me, speak to that. Um, we discussed that in EDC. Mr. Reader was there. We talked about, he actually proposed a good idea of let's maybe have a community day, work on it, go together. He offered his support. My concerns about that were the city's liability. If it wasn't engineered by an engineer, that if something happened there, that we would be liable. And so I was kinda like leery about that. I'm willing to the EDC, but I just don't want to put the city in any liability issues with that. But I did go down and look at it probably about two weeks ago. I think I texted Rudy that I had gone and looked at it and reconsidered that structurally, we wouldn't have to change the actual structure of the pier in order to make it sound. So whoever engineered it in the beginning, it would still be under that person's, you know, design to strengthen it. Wouldn't really change that structure. So it would require us to drill some holes, put in some bolts in some areas to reinforce and stuff. It would also require us to drill some more holes and put in some boards that are supposed to be the type of boards that you use for around water wet situations that would hold up. It is something that I think that we could do, like, just as kind of a community project on further looking at it. All we would need then is materials. We have people that are willing to volunteer labor. I mean, I know that I would volunteer labor. You had already said that you would volunteer labor and some things to cut with, and we've got some things to cut with as long as we've got batteries and electricity. I think we could manage to fix it where kids get swimming in.
The last time I was down there, we had 14 boards that were missing. And there is a big danger of somebody falling into the water. There's 14 boards missing, and we've been wrestling with this for two years. I mean, we can't get people to go down there and put 14 boards down. But they're missing and people are fishing, people are, when school's out, that place is gonna be crowded with kids. We need 14 boards. What size?
No, untroubled.
I don't know.
We were, we were asking as, you know, me speaking from the Economic Development Committee on Rudy's behalf, could we have a budget of maybe $2,500, not to exceed $2,500 to purchase materials that we could use with that volunteer labor from the city council? And whatever money we don't use, we'll go back.
The pier is.
Can I take the, can I ask a question? Are we talking about the pier down by the lake? Over here?
Yes, please.
The wooden one. Yeah. 14 boards.
That's what I counted.
How do I go about donating them to the city?
To be fair, the pier is not in the city. It's in the county.
True. I don't care. How do I go about donating them and getting this done?
So you could just go out there and do it more legally than we could.
We have talked to Mr. Pollock, and he is in the process of, he has talked to Pittsburgh, and he has told us, "Whatever you need to do, do it."
Mr. Pollock is the plant manager.
He's the plant manager out here.
Oh, okay.
He told us, "There's not an issue with you doing anything in the swimming area. Whatever you need to do, do it."
There's no, there's no.
I'm just telling you. He's been going up drafting us a letter to send it to us, and he said, "You tell them that I said, 'Whatever you need to do, do it.'"
So if we have that documentation from them to allow us to do that, if we have citizens that are willing to donate the materials and the community willing to donate their time to do it, then I don't think there's a question.
So there's no legal issue with U.S. Steel, right? We can make improvements, or somebody else could make improvements to their property, and if they're okay with it, then they're not gonna sue them. The issue is the fact of spending public money outside the city on land that we don't own.
We're not talking about spending public money now at this point.
Well, she said $2,500.
But he asked, if it's donated, every guy that has a community.
He said, "Who's permission?" Who did he have to ask? The city? And I said, "Nobody."
Can we make a vote?
We don't need a motion.
Y'all just proceed.
Next round of.
Y'all proceed with the material and send it out to the community and just go forward. We don't have the motion to let it.
They can do what they want outside of the city.
They don't have to do anything.
Work for me. Like I said, I'm still noted this. Bear with me. I'm sorry.
Can I ask, could the city choose a date that we would have a community clean up the park day? And then it could happen then? Because there's a lot of other things like picking up limbs, picking up trash, weeding.
We can put a post out on social media.
Why don't you do it on the majority of, you have the big dumpsters out from the city twice a year?
Personally, I believe probably just leaving the city out of it makes more sense. There's places on Facebook. We all have friends that we can post to, and I think the group can be gotten together and the materials and be done. Those that are willing to volunteer will come out of the woodwork and do it if they're willing to.
Are you gonna have a, say, a person to coordinate all efforts that is knowledgeable of what they're doing? Do we have someone like that? Because you can have more of a hiccup with someone that thinks that they know what they're doing and gets out their miscuts every board that you just donated. And so someone that has knowledge on that kind of carpentry work.
I think that's outside of the city's.
Correct. But it is the city park.
It's literally outside the city.
I really don't wanna have.
So why is it called the city park?
The pier, the city limits, is about the easement line. It's actually above the water. Anything in the water is outside the city and well past outside the water.
I think that pipe is where the.
Is it one of the easement pipes? But not the pier, not the water, not the beach. Yes.
Mr. McGinnis.
Drill holders.
We've got going out. So Mr. McGinnis will donate boards?
I will.
And who else is gonna do what?
Brad Jackson.
Brad Jackson? Will do what?
Drill holes.
In other words, they would do it.
Sam Winkle, I'll cut the boards or something.
Thank you, guys.
I'll even bring my carpentry.
I think if the whole community comes together and takes care of these things, it doesn't really involve on the city and can, anything the city gets involved with is gonna be three times the price and red tape and headaches. And I appreciate the community coming together. So if there's nobody.
Okay, moving on. 8-8, review discussion possible action on cleaning out and bridging of the swimming area at the City Park.
Hey, first thing you need to know is we've been approached by Texas Parks and Wildlife. They said within a three-week period, they are willing to come out and spray the dock and the swimming area to reduce the growth of hydralor or whatever for nothing. They're gonna do it for free.
Yes, good.
Okay, now, prior to doing that, we need to clean all that stuff. I mean, it's grown up pretty good. To spray it on top of it, it's not gonna get it in the shape it needs to be in. Number one, I think it's not gonna do as good a kill. Number two, it's not gonna be ready for the summer for kids to swim. We have contacted, we have done, contacted three or four, and Mitch can speak to this more than I can if he did the contact. And prior to finding, it's gonna take us a 60-foot boom to park on the land down there, reach out and get all that stuff out of the swimming area to keep it clean before they come and spray. Okay? The best price we can get on that, we contacted, I don't know how many. You can address that.
There's a long-reach excavator in Longview. We were originally told they were gonna have to bring one in for Ford Works and it was gonna be about $8,000. I found a long-reach excavator at Longview and what's, $3,600?
Yes, sir.
$3,600 to do it.
And that's for a week if we need it for that long. We're anticipating three days is what it will take to clean it up. Okay, now, what are we gonna do when we get on it, right? Well, you have to have a dump truck to put it in the mood, okay? We have several places that are wanting to rent us a dump truck and an operator for $500 a day. I contacted the county. Our commissioner, Kerry McCoy, told me that if we would let him know when we needed it, the county will provide us with a dump truck and an operator for three days at no cost. Okay, and what our plan is, is to take the material out of there, put it in a dump truck, take it up behind the baseball softball field where all that junk is up there in that trench, dump it in there because it'd just be weeds. And by the time it has a chance to filter and get back down, which are going to the lake, way away from the dock, whatever, all the mess should be gone out of it. And it will clean out the swimming area, allow it to be used by the kids without any further issues. It'll be sprayed by the state for free, so there shouldn't be any issues. It should be able to be used.
The $3,600 is delivery and pickup. We don't have to mess with any of it.
And we have.
And that thing is, that thing's law.
And our only issue with that is they wouldn't provide us with an operator.
That's what I was gonna ask.
So, so what I have done is we have the contractor starting on redoing all the fencing material.
RCC.
For the baseball softball field within the next week. They've already put barrels down there, put up caution tape. They're getting ready to remove the telephone poles and get ready to get started. He told me that if we would get all the other stuff, and we would get the track hole. He's a qualified track hole operator, and he would charge us $400 a day, which is cheaper than we can get anywhere else, to operate it for three full days. So if you add the $3,600 and the $1,200, that's well under the $5,000 that we even need to go out and get bits on it. We can't find an operator and/or a track hole any cheaper than that to get the swimming area cleaned up. So.
I've got to tell the guy in Longview, I've got to give him some kind of schedule because this thing is in big demand.
Our plan is if we get it approved tonight, we'll call them in the morning and get it set up or next week or as soon as we can after that so it will be ready for the summer for the kids. so it will be ready for the summer for the kids.
Did anyone ask the county about paying all of it?
I'm sorry?
Did anyone ask the county about paying all of it?
All of, well, they won't pay-
The cost of dredging.
They won't pay, they won't pay for the track hole and that, they'll pay for the dump truck and the operator.
Because it is in the county, but it's not in the city.
I'm sorry?
The swimming area.
The park is not in the city?
The swimming area.
The track hole will be parked on city property.
Right. And so we should allow anybody who wants to clean it out to park on city property. But as far as the expenditure, it is in the county, not in the city.
We got the county involved in this, it's got to go to the commissioner's court, and that's going to be in June.
That's who should be doing it.
You what, did you say, I'm sorry? What was your call here?
I said, that's who should be doing this.
No, I disagree. That's your opinion.
It benefits the people of Longstar specifically. So that's why I think it's an expenditure that we should make.
I'm not fully educated on the laws or have, I've not looked up the plot of land and everything. I don't feel that I can personally stand this because I think there is a case where we may not have the authority. And until I'm educated on that, I can't vote for anything, even if I think it's a good idea or whatever.
I, I want to know that the people who would spray it, the experts on spraying, would agree that it should be dredged and then sprayed versus sprayed and then dredged.
Well, if you spray it and it's not dredged, everything that you sprayed is going to die on top of what's already dead.
Right, it's dead and then it disintegrates and it floats away, versus you're burying half of it and dredging it.
There are reeds out there that's not going to disintegrate, disintegrate so away, those big reeds by that period, they're not going to go away.
No, but you spray them and you have access to the leaves, that's what you spray. If you've dredged it, you've cut it off at the ground, you're not able to spray anything connected to the roots or anything else. So I wouldn't just say, well, it's probably better to dredge it and then spray it, I would say it's probably not the case.
Yes, ma'am. So, um, I've studied hydrola a lot since I've moved to Longstar. Um, they do have a very shallow root system. If you cut it, it's going to float to my neighbor's house or your neighbor's house and replant, times ten. So dredging then spraying is going to double whammy in.
Uh, dredging would dig it out by the roots, wouldn't it?
They're very shallow.
We're looking through the leaves.
Very shallow.
I pull my hand a break.
Like if you cut vines and then spray the stumps, it does zero. It's not the poison on the ground, it's the poison on the leaves. I don't know if that's the case, and I'm glad.
Yeah, and I was going to ask, so I'm just kind of here and there, but for this hydrola thing, but did they agree to spray it, Texas Park and Wildlife, did they agree to spray it one time, or like the four treatments that everybody on the lake is having to pay for, so one time?
Yes. And you have to understand, it's not just hydrola. There's stuff that is grown on the bottom there that we can get out of there too. So, it's a, it's more than a hydrola issue, okay? I mean, we, you go and cut the hydrola off and spray, okay, per se, but the thing about it is you're still even more standard, you get a kid jumping off in there. I mean, that, that's our issue is, you know, and somebody's going to come in and say, oh, it's not the city's liability. Well, I'll guarantee you, if a kid gets in there and gets hung out and drowns, it'll be a city issue.
Did the city, I seem to remember, I could be inaccurate, um, that the city brought in sand at one point dumped in there?
And that's just possibility to do it again, would you still need to clean it up to get a clean ground?
Well, I was going to say, or you're just going to make a muddy mess if we go digging the sand out and stirring up the dirt.
I do know some other people that have done this.
I would think you could do that after you spray.
I just, I know personally some other people that have done this, that has pulled the weeds and had the spraying done by Texas Park and Wildlife, and has said, after those weeds and stuff are removed, like when those, the hydrola and the weeds are there, it's a soggy mushy mess. But now that those weeds are gone, that ground has now hardened itself and re-served. I mean, and I've heard that from several people that has paid this and went through this process, so I don't think that it will, I mean, stay, I think, hard and coarse.
I think the biggest problem at the park, sorry.
Solid surface.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
I think the biggest problem at the park is reeds, more than hydrola, in the swimming area.
Don't reeds have deep roots?
Yeah, so if you dredge it and cut it off, spraying is not going to do anything for the reeds.
Doesn't dredge and dig it out, it's going to cut it off and dredge it.
You're cutting it off at somewhere in the dirt.
It sounds good to clean it, and it doesn't seem that expensive to clean it. And I mean, it seems like the guys make their due diligence and try to get stuff that's very cheap. Because I know, I rent, I rent the equipment, and that price is cheap, trust me. I've done it.
Since I've been on the Economic Development Committee for the last nine years, we have spent ten to fifteen thousand dollars dredging that swimming area. One time we did haul sand in, and I think that was a big mistake. But we made, we dredged it at least three times, spending five thousand dollars in a time.
So, I don't know within the group, how many people have actually hired someone to dredge their property.
Very expensive.
So, I can tell you, Kerry and I did. We, we contacted a contractor, contractor, some report last. He came over with a huge fifty-five thousand pound excavator and excavated all of the ground out underneath the water because we had a hydrola and we also had a potted pond, American pond weed, and there was about four different problems there with it. What it left with even today, okay, and yeah, it's about a foot and a half of just monk silt, right? So what it left, it left us with is no weeds in that area where he got his excavator to. He excavated, took, this, the bucket alone was three foot by three foot by three foot. So every swath he would take would dump a cube guard up on the ground. It is a horrendous odor, it's a big, huge muddy mess, but just like Mr. W. said, once it does dry, okay, it is, a pile of it bigger than that desk weighs five pounds-ish, right? I mean, just, it weighs nothing, it's like grass clippings or less. But what you get, what you, with the excavator is now, it's a cleaner surface underneath. Um, it, it will have irregularities, you know, to it, and time will fill it up and go over. But we've also paid the company that probably Texas Park and Wildlife produces, Solitude, to come out, and they're servicing our part of the water, and that is, I can tell you, they've done three treatments, and it is a huge improvement over what it was.
So the reeds are gone and removed, we did that, um, I said, we finished the dock last year, so it was a year and a half ago, that we did the excavation, and we have no reed return anywhere on our shoreline. And the hydrola, because it's, it's transported by the salvia through propellers and motion in the water, and so of course we get growth from that, and as well, we don't have neighbors that don't treat the water like we do or try to help the problem, so it's maintained for safety. Um, as a nurse, I speak to the safety of tinsel strength in water. Um, I come from Colorado, which is clear cold water, okay? Stuff's still gross. Tinsel strength like your hair, one strand breaks easy, four strands of hydrola, break easy. Get fifteen around your ankle, he almost drowned up the end of our dock, and five of us did not see him, struggling on a stand-up paddleboard because of the cord, got into the weeds, and he couldn't make surface. He finally, he panicked, and the adrenaline helped him, helped him to break free. So for safety reasons, it needs to be addressed because it is a public swimming area, and we, you know, a five-year-old unattended, it takes a teaspoon of water to drown. Dry drowning happens all the time, you know, and it just takes a couple weeds. So I think that it's a good idea that we progress to just enhance the safety of a public city park, which includes a swimming area.
Safe swimming area. A safe swimming area.
Yep.
I make a motion, we go through the cleaning out and dredging the swimming area at the city park.
What's, what's the amount?
Forty-eight hundred, something like that.
Thirty-six.
Thirty. Was it thirty-two hundred and fifteen hundred for?
Thirty-six hundred and twelve fifty. So we talked about, for three, that's appropriate five thousand, which are returns of what's unused.
Forty-eight fifty, not twelve.
I haven't had any time to look at it either.
So there was a motion and a second.
Did the motion include an amount?
Well, they were just, uh-
You said forty-eight fifty.
So Tony's making a motion to have the park team to have it cleaned out for the amount of forty-eight fifty, not to exceed forty-eight fifty?
Five.
Not to exceed five?
How often do we have to do this?
Three times every nine years at least, apparently.
Cindy, second motion. Okay, all in favor of cleaning up the park with the five thousand dollar budget? Say, um, great, uh, all against?
Nay.
Motion carries. Uh, moving, moving on to eight dash nine, review discussion, possible actions to amend the contract for the baseball softball field to include procurement of Jeterpist infield conditioner?
Okay, let me explain to you what the deal is. As you, first of all, a lot of people still be not understanding the EDC, and I'm not going to get all the ins and outs. One of the things we can do as a small community, we aren't trying to bring business in here. We talked the other day, we brought in like four, helped four, and we got some more that are trying to move in. When I went to the EDC conference, they told all the small communities, don't focus on bringing in big business, you're not going to get it. Focus on what you can do to your community to attract people to come and spend money. One of the things that people have been telling me all along is we need to get the park up and going again. The playful people can gather, we can have events, has been neglected for too long. One of the things we are doing is, we signed a contract to have the baseball softball, all the bids are torn down, new fencing put up, we're going to put backtop netting in, the dugouts are going to be done, uh, the contractors agreed to help me. Uh, they're going to put a spray wash system, we're having the water in, we're going to run the pipe, put two or three heads of water to the outfield and strip the infield because there don't even have any grass in there. We have something else to take care of. Once we do that, it will be dirt, raw dirt. If you've been to Danger Field, you will see that in the biggest Danger Field, their field is in terrible shape and is all dirt and grass is one of them. If you tape this infield soil conditioner that is made for that purpose and mix it as you are smoothing out the dirt, it does the following, and I put it in this bag that I gave to the council, okay? It allows water to percolate, it's easy to install, maintain, and manage, it requires less water to achieve optimum moisture and playability, consistency, safety, uh, great, greater ball visibility and aesthetics, suitable with all levels of play, and it works well with any other field conditioner and amendments, and you can use it for all levels of play. Our feeling is, we do this and mix it in and do it right, we're going to have a playing surface that, what we're hoping is, everybody will want to come here and play instead of going to Danger Field or somewhere else and play. Our expectation, we've already been committed, uh, Danger Field next spring to have two full leagues played in, okay? We are going to try to have at least one tournament coming in between July fourth and Labor Day, maybe two, okay? So that money will be money that comes back to the city. This is a, in our opinion, this is a good investment. Now, as a caveat to that, let me tell you. I had two people who go to senior citizens who approached me in town the other day, and the gentleman gave me the special house it used to be down there. He walked up and handed me an envelope, and he said, you take this to the EDC, this is for the EDC, he'll explain it when you open the envelope. I brought it to the meeting, gave it to Tina, and I'll be in on the seal. At the end of the meeting, I said, you unseal it. It was a five hundred dollar donation, cash donation specifically to assist with helping to get the softball baseball field. The senior citizens had a meeting two weeks ago, and they committed to, when they could, paying a little bit of money back to the EDC for helping them get the building open. Not much, because we don't bring in a lot of money, it's all donations, but they donated twenty dollars for helping with the softball baseball field. Today, I was approached by A and E Mechanical, they gave us a unknown five hundred dollar donation to help us with the softball baseball field. So if you add those amounts up, off of the, you will see in this information I gave you, there are bids where we went out because not everybody does this, not everybody has this material, a bakery sure wouldn't have this material. However, if you look at it, we have been quoted a price of four thousand two hundred dollars for a twenty-four ton truck, which is what estimates we will take to mix in with the dirt and make it playable, for four thousand two hundred dollars. If you take that and you subtract off the thousand dollars that we've accumulated in donations, you reduce the cost to the EDC for the thirty-two hundred dollars to have that done. So what we're asking is approval for thirty-two hundred dollars to purchase that material, mix it in, make it a solid place, and make it a place where other people and our citizens will want to go and enjoy the baseball field and play the park.
One thing I think we need to mention is that I contacted Booty Cass. We were struggling with how to get the lines down from the old lights. They're useless. And Booty Cass came down and took the lines, electrical lines, down off the small field and the big field at zero cost.
Cost is nothing.
Cost is nothing, and that was a key.
And our, and our plan, and we reduced that, our plan is, they're going to try to pull the holes out that the lights are on, pull them straight out of the ground if they can, we're going to put them over to the side, and we will use those to line a parking lot or places for people, you know, to, to be able to go and park or whatever we decide to do with it, but we will have them there, so it's not like we're going to get rid of them, we're going to reuse that material as we can.
Or a storm sirens system.
Yeah. So, anyway, but getting back to what we were talking about, we're asking for the approval for thirty-two to be able to do that.
It says amend the contract?
I'm sorry?
The agenda item says amend the contract.
Yeah, we're going to amend the contract because the companies who's stripping off the infield has agreed to help mix that material in as of, when they strip the infield off at no cost because they're already going to be doing it, so our cost is just the material cost, and then they will take it up there, spread it, and we'll mix it in. And once we get that done, well, they'll drag it and do whatever we're going to do with the rest.
And you, you signed this contract on May fifth, right?
I'm sorry?
You signed this contract on May fifth?
Yes. And this, this just came up, this part, it could be amended. So we can amend the contract to include this at no cost, it's cost of thirty-two hundred purchasing.
And this expenditure was authorized, uh, when?
I'm sorry?
When was the sixty-five thousand authorized?
Oh, gosh, I don't remember when we authorized it, way back in like January, February, we signed back then, approved by Cal. You should know, you were there.
Well, the EDC had had its corporate status revoked at the time, so I think it's a complicated legal issue of whether or not that expenditure authorization carried over to when it was then reinstated. I wouldn't have taken it for granted if that was the case. I don't gamble that way.
You have a motion? Okay, uh, moving on to, we need, what to sign, what to do.
We got a motion.
We have a motion to accept the amended contract that's volunteered, uh, on.
What was the amount?
Thirty-two hundred. Thirty-two hundred.
We, we spend hundreds of thousands of dollars at the park and six thousand on the street repairs. Danafield spends six thousand on the park and hundreds of thousands on the street repairs.
Can I address that, or this is not the right time? I would like to address that.
Uh, no, we're talking about how we're spending money at the park.
I can refer for a later time, but, you know, I would, I would like to be the respective, not bringing up issues that are not on.
Yeah, okay, so do we have any motions?
How long is that, Leo?
We're making a motion to do the thirty-two hundred, right?
Right.
Yeah, I'm making a motion.
I second it.
So Cindy, you're making a motion to, to, to go forward with this action to pay the thirty-two? Jury's second.
To amend it. Yeah, to amend it.
From six dollars to thirty-two.
All in favor? Against?
Nay.
Yep, motion carries. Uh, moving on to eight-ten, review discussion, possible action to solicit, uh, RFPs to obtain a new sign for city and ask the council to approve twenty-five thousand for this procurement.
Okay, let me give you a brief background. As you're well aware, we have a city sign up here by Dollar Gemma. It hasn't worked in four years, okay? We as an EDC, the sign was purchased, I believe, if I, if I find a check, two thousand and fifteen. Uh, when I came on board with the EDC in two thousand and seventeen, uh, the sign didn't work. At that point in time, Devon was our secretary, and I said, why are we not using the sign? And she said, it's too hard to program. We have to take a laptop down there, plug it in because it's not Wi-Fi accessible. So I went down there, plugged into the laptop and turned it on, and there was parts of it that did work and parts of it that didn't. We purchased a sign out of Signs Express in Mount Pleasant, so I contacted them and I said, can you come out here and look at the sign? Well, yeah, but, you know, we have to charge you for that. Well, who doesn't? Anyway, they came out here, looked at the sign, and they said, there's like ninety-six ribbons and twenty-four module boards inside of it, and part of them had gone out. Well, we came back to the EDC, since the EDC spent money to purchase it. And I said, do you want us to try to fix it? We authorized a maximum of ten thousand dollars to be spent to fix the sign. Called Signs Express, they came back out here again, pulled the modules, took them back to their office. That was during COVID. It took them forever to get them in. When they got them in, they, I said, well, how much do we owe you? And they said, I think it was twenty-three hundred dollars. Well, they came out and put them in, it worked for one day, and then we started having issues with it. Called them back, I said, whatever you did didn't work, you need to come back. So they came back out here, opened it up, and said, well, it's the motherboard. I said, well, okay, so he said, we need to take them back to the shop and look at them. Well, what they did when they took them back to the shop is they left the nagged them sign open, as you see it now, the way it sits. And I contacted them and I said, you need to come and close the sign. You left it open. Oh, well, it's going to be a while before we can get there. I said, that's unacceptable. Well, you see how it sits right now? Because I called them on the phone and I said, whatever you're doing, stop because we're not putting any more money into this. It's evident, either you don't know what's going on or you don't know how to fix it, and we're not spending any more money on it, we're not throwing good money after bad. Well, part of the problem is, it's Chinese. So that should tell you all you need to know about the integrity of the sign. I've been approached by several people stating, we have no methodology in this town to let people know of anything. Prime example was, we're in a burn notice, or in a boil notice. A lot of people didn't know we were in a boil notice as of yesterday, and we went in the boil notice Friday or Saturday.
No, we went in the boil notice Monday.
Okay, so, but they didn't know for two days that we had the boil notice, okay? We have no me, if we go into burn ban, we have no methodology to let our people know anything in this town. We don't know, we don't, people don't know what a council meeting is. People don't know what an EDC meeting is. Nobody knows. I've been approached by at least seventy-five, a hundred people saying, when we come through the town and the sign was working, at least we could see what was going on. So.
There again, though, you have, we, we, when we just had an election and you had all these signs out by the road and half the people in the lungs started to know there was an election going on.
That's the choice for elections.
There were signs, I was up at the boil ban, there were signs. Um, I went and personally put about twenty-five signs out on businesses Sunday night whenever I first found out about it, when we had to put the issue to notice on Monday.
Anyway, what I'm, that's, that's, that's an example. What I'm telling you is this, as an EDC, and I think they will agree with me, we feel like it would be good money to spend to obtain a sign, a digital sign for the city, to put up so people can see what's going on next. I've been contacting companies to find out how much they are because we don't have thirty, forty thousand dollars to spend on the sign, okay? I have gotten quotes from twenty-five thousand dollar pay. Uh, I have a quote you will see in this information that I gave you. It's a firm called TV Liquidators. We can get a double sided sign, seven foot by four on a forty inch pedestal with the city logo on top of it, and the ability to have a digital running sign underneath it for fifteen thousand five hundred eighty-five dollars. I did other research on this sign, and in the same package you will see, there's a plethora of cities in, in the state of Texas that they have provided signs to from this company, and I've contacted several of them. So they are reputable. The sign is made in the USA. It is guaranteed for three to ten years depending upon what you buy, okay? So they service it personally. I have another contractor who has agreed to come in here Monday and meet with me and look at where we could possibly put one and give me a bid on it. So this is just a pre-notification of what we could do. All I'm wanting to know is that the council will authorize us to go forth with a request for proposal, to accept proposals to see what it would cost us to get this done with a maximum cost expenditure not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars. And I don't plan on spending anywhere.
We're also talking to a couple of the business owners about moving the location of that sign because it is.
Yeah, you can help us see it.
The old sign was well over twenty thousand dollars, and it never worked for more than a week at a time.
I think it was twenty-six thousand.
From when it was brand new.
Last sign, I, I have, I have a check from the EDC, it was written for the last sign, and I believe it's thirty thousand dollars.
What's the current balance of the EDC?
About two hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars.
At the start of this meeting or at the finish?
I'm sorry?
At the beginning of this meeting or the, the, the end of this meeting?
At the beginning of this meeting.
So now about a hundred thousand by the end of the meeting?
No, we'll have more than a hundred thousand. I don't know where your math is, but you're wrong.
That, that's, yeah.
What was that? EDC spending and how much is in the EDC account is not on the agenda.
Just want to procure bids for, for the signs, is that correct?
Yes, just to. To see what we can get in cost for the dollar rest.
Because the agenda says approve twenty-five thousand dollars for this procurement.
It's to solicit request for pricing.
Agree.
Depends on what the motion is.
Are we going to motion to solicit request for pricing without?
Yes, make, I'm going to make a motion to solicit prices to obtain a new sign. Just solicit.
So if you're going to solicit prices, that means that someone will need to come back and present those prices.
That's correct.
Therefore, you cannot be purchasing anything.
Once we will get those, we know the council.
Not solicit, we don't want to purchase.
Right, just to compare to that, yep.
No problem.
Okay, uh, so we had Tony made a motion, jury's seconded it?
Yes.
All in favor? Against?
Nay.
Motion carries. Moving on to, uh, eight-eleven, review discussion, possible action for procurement of three Conex trailers for the city park, uh, one forty foot Conex, the concession stand, one twenty foot for a women's restroom, and a twenty foot for a men's restroom.
We have, uh, been in contact, I met with Hughes Springs the other day uh, because we have got to fix our restrooms at the park. Uh, I don't know how many of you have been down there, but you can't even go in, it's terrible. The contractors we have talked to and that have come in here and looked at it have told me, you cannot salvage it. There's too much shagira and feces that's been put into it. You'll never get it in the shape with the smell to get it out of the concrete to be able to reuse it. Besides that, the foundation is starting to freeze and everything else is starting to wallow. It's not loose, but it's starting to break apart underneath. We have looked at several options. We talked to Rocky Point, remember Ginger Schmidt, because they put restrooms in down there, and I wanted to know what they got, how they did it, what the cost was. She bought two buildings from Dennis Nix, uh, had those buildings re-done by contractors, who I have named those contractors. And those two restrooms that she had done were sixty-five thousand dollars. Okay? I talked to, uh, several other contractors, I talked to people who have used Conex trailers to turn them into restrooms, concession stands, and things like that. They, the ones I have talked to said, everybody who's gotten them, there are several advantages. Number one, the term lifetime expectancy, thirty years, okay? Number two, they are virtually indestructible, okay? Number three, you can secure them to mitigate people getting inside to tear them up. Number four, you can get them fixed to where all you do is go in, spray them down, hose them down, wash them out, and they're good to go for the next cycle. You don't leave them open twenty-four hours a day, okay? So before you can do that, you have to, you can buy them, I mean, I can go buy a Conex trailer right now with a men's and women's restroom in it, but it's going to cost me eighty-five thousand dollars, okay? I can buy two Conexes twenty foot long for approximately seven thousand dollars. I can buy a forty foot Conex for approximately seven thousand dollars, okay? Those are one used Conex trailers.
I meant the two, is that four thousand pieces?
No, it's about thirty-five hundred pieces.
Okay.
Okay? They will be delivered to the park. I have already contacted three contractors who have the ability to cut the holes, do the welding. What we'll do is buy the actual parcels of stalls to put in them to create a men's and a women's in each one of the twenty foot trailers that will be adequate for the park. We would like to relocate them on the other side of the trees, not by where the playground is, where the park, where the current restroom is, but up a little bit further where the ground is kind of level. So we can, so, because once we put them in there, you won't be able to move it, we'll level them out. The ground will be set, will settle on them because we'll have that done. But before the Conex trailers go up anymore, they have started to skyrocket because people know you can use them for stuff like that. So the price continues to go up. What would have cost, what Mitch, fifteen hundred dollars six months ago, now it's thirty-five hundred dollars. I have one other option that I'm exploring, and if we get that option, then it might reduce our cost even further on Conex trailer. But I can't speak to that because I haven't talked to the individual, and they won't be back in town until next week. But what we're wanting to know, if you will approve us before they go up anymore, to, to go ahead and purchase those Conex trailers, have them brought in, and at that point in time, start taking bids on what it would take to get the restrooms done. The forty foot one we use for a concession, okay? And storage for anything that is needed for upkeep on the softball baseball field, for what the city park, things like that, so.
Can I just make a, a suggestion?
Yes, ma'am.
Just personal opinion, so we're, we've already agreed to spend all this money on the park and put in all this infrastructure to get a track of softball teams and leagues and such, but is, is it possible just to, to do that and kind of wait and see how much traction we have and how much interest we have in people coming in? And if there is some leagues that want to come in, like, you know, renting porta potties for tournaments and getting a food truck to come in there temporarily, just to see how much interest we have before we commit to.
Now, I will tell you this, okay, this is the first time I've mentioned this. I have a commitment, and I'll bring it to the council next month. As you know, uh, Huckleberries is having a big deal up here in their park on Saturday to benefit the Hughes Springs Fire Department after the tornado. I've already been in touch with some of those vendors, and Huckleberries has told me that it would be more than willing to help. I've contacted Norm Allen, who is willing to help. And our plan is, if we can get it authorized through the city, to have a Labor Day celebration at the park with vendors, music, the possibility of bringing in a softball tournament to coincide with that, to make some money for the city. Because we have, our, our goal is to get people coming in this city to spend money. Because when they do that, the city benefits. So we've been committed to do that, we just have to put all the logistics together, get that approved, and that will happen. And my opinion is it can't happen too soon because we're starting for funds in this city, and that will help us start getting them in, so that's where we're at. So anyway, that's the proposal, counsel.
So I've been down to the park and looked at everything, and, uh, my daughter had her wedding at the park a year ago. And we used the, uh, concession stand, and that's concession stand area, it's got a brand new new find. There is no reason that I can see that for much less money, we couldn't just fix the concession stand, paint it. There's a little bit of woodwork and new doors. And as far as the bathrooms go, I can't go in there because they're locked, but, uh. Well, they, they make epoxy coat to put on concrete that will absolutely water seal it. You can use oil based paint on the walls because they're cinder block walls, or concrete walls, I'm not sure which. But the building is fine. I don't know why we would want to spend sixty thousand dollars on, or forty thousand or even twenty thousand. We can probably renovate what we have rather than digging new septic, bringing new water in into wherever we put these, all the dirt leveling on top of a big metal building that's like an oven typically. How are they going to be ventilated, how are they going to be cooled so that you're not sitting in a big metal box in the sun? I can't see any reason to spend this kind of money when we can spend a much smaller amount of money and make very nice what we already have. And my biggest problem is, the reason the bathrooms are in the shape they're in is because nobody's cleaned them in years that I'm aware of. So if we put a nice fancy new bathroom, it's just going to fall apart again if nobody's cleaning it.
Yeah, I like the income. I mean, we could agree to solicit request for rehabbing what we currently have.
Yeah, we can do that too. But that's up to them, that's not on us to decide that.
I mean, would, would the EDC be, uh?
Yeah, we don't have a problem with it, but let me explain something. He talked about the integrity of the building. The contractors that I said, the problem with the restroom is the fact that the concrete is starting to disintegrate because of the tree roots and the, the concrete is separated. It's widening out at the top, so.
Where?
You're not going to be able to bring that back in without doing a lot of work underneath it. It can be done.
Can they inject that foam?
They'll, they would have to come in and inject stuff underneath the building to try to re-level it to get it in a shape where we can do that. It can be done.
The cinder block's not even cracked, the foundation's okay. The sidewalk concrete is, is cracked.
I'm telling you right now, if you would like to go down there and let me take you down there, I can show you exactly what I'm talking about. I'm not advocating to spend a bunch of money, we don't have to. I'm just telling you, the contractors that we have talked to who have come down there, and I'll, any contractor you call, I'll be more than happy to meet them down there and we can go down there and visit. But I'm telling you, they're telling us that it's going to take more and that may be not fixed what we have than what it would take to redo it. Now, if you want to do a concrete bathroom, we can do that, but you're going to spend as much if not more. And it, believe me, I went to Hughes Springs, they have a very nice restroom up there, by Spring Park, if you've been over there. We don't need anything that big. We don't need anything near that big. But it's going to, it doesn't matter what you do, it's going to cost you between at least thirty to forty thousand to renovate what you have or to do anything small and bring it in. I'm just telling, that's just what it's going to take. If you want us to entertain, request for proposal to, to redo the concession stand, I don't have a problem with that at all. My deal is, we need just to make sure we make it secure because I don't want somebody breaking into it.
Who's going to secure it?
I'm sorry?
Who's going to lock it every night? Unlock it everywhere?
Please forceful do that.
How much are we paying for the porta potty?
I think last time we rented one for an event, I think for two of them, it was like three hundred dollars.
This one's not that much. I'm thinking, the one that we've got down there now, we usually have it, the reason why it was, it was picked up because someone went down and vandalized the porta potty. So I had it picked up with, I had it delivered back down there before Easter because we had some activities scheduled down there. And they charge you a one time bring it out fee and I think it's like forty bucks for that. And I believe the monthly fee for it, I may be wrong, I think it's less than ninety dollars. I can't remember the exact because they have, they had increased a little bit from when they had done it last year. And I'm waiting for the invoice on that, but I think I usually try to keep it down there from, you know, like from April to September.
When they come service it, do they just switch it out or what do they do?
They come and clean it out, they re... Yeah, they clean it out and they put new tissues and everything in it.
No matter what kind of bathroom you have, how often are we gonna clean it and who's gonna clean it?
I have actually gone down and cleaned that one when I first came down here, whenever, once. And I went down there to clean it again and they had gone, some wonderful person filled it up for us and to the point where we may have to have a plumber to come in and unclog it. I think it's got tissue, a roll of tissue and stuff like that along with other things in there that I'm not touching.
Which puts more of an emphasis on making sure whatever we do, we adequately secure it to mitigate that happening. In the building we have now, you don't have that.
It was discussed at one time that if we, about a year and a half, year ago, possibly of putting some type of additional exterior gate on that metal door to where the gate can be locked because people have gone in and pried that door open and then they go in and vandalize and you know, nobody wants to take care of anything anymore and then grumble when they don't have something. We had an opportunity for thirty something kids to come down there for spring outing and because we only had the single porter John down there, they chose not to come down there because we couldn't offer more restroom facilities for the kids.
And my expectation, and this is just me, okay, I'm just gonna tell you. My expectation is if we can get the concession stands and the restroom going, maybe not this summer because we're running up against the heat, but what I would like to do is see us next year as a city invest in the fact that we can have a summer program down there for kids so they could come down there, maybe rent a game or play a game underneath that or do whatever and then have them a sack lunch during the day because some of them may not be able to eat during the day. And that would give us an opportunity to help the community.
Yes, ma'am.
In regards to porta potties, like say you're having a tournament down there, well, how many do you think you need? One, one or two sure not gonna be enough a weekend.
I mean, we play ball there a weekend. Some tournaments they only have two or three depending on how big it is. I don't think you're gonna have very big leagues go down there. I think you could probably rent two or three for the kind of tournament size you'd be having down there at the park if you want. So I think my suggestion would be to do that and bring in, support your local food trucks and trailers and bring them in and see how much interest you have before you jump into that, but that's only a suggestion.
How many fields are down at the park? I'm not familiar.
Two.
And how many fields do you need for a tournament?
Depending on what each tournament...
Where's the other one? Oh, there was just one.
We have two, but right now one of them is called River Bay. The other one...
It was removed without any authorization a long time ago, but it's not there currently. There's one field.
There's two.
There is two fields, one of them is just a restaurant.
So could we...
There's no fence whatsoever.
Solicit some for trying to...
Yes, sir, if that's what you want us to do, I will be more than happy to go.
Just to solicit.
Give people some reason about what to...
Because I'm all about, this is my deal, I don't want to throw money away, but I want it to be nice enough for people to use.
I understand. So that would be...
Yes, sir.
With what we have on the agenda, I would make a motion that we do not authorize this purchase for the Conexes. I think the EDC can come back with additional options if it chooses to.
So you're making a motion to not...
Making a motion that we do not allow this expenditure.
I second it.
Sir.
So Keith has made a motion to not authorize the purchase of the Conexes, Cody has seconded it.
We need to vote on that motion second, first. Tabling it would mean that we would have it at the next meeting necessarily.
We're gonna vote to table it for the next meeting?
I made a motion that we don't accept this. I mean, he can vote on this. If my motion fails, somebody else can make a motion.
Okay, that we don't vote on this at this point in time?
My motion is that we don't accept this expenditure.
Seconded it.
I seconded it?
Yes, you seconded it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion.
So you're making a motion that really bring another bid?
Well, that's not just a bid. It's just that he...
To provide additional...
He proposed this, proposed something additional that since they wanted to see if they could remodel it in a sense, so...
So are we gonna have two motions on this?
No. I withdraw that one.
Okay.
They can always bring it up.
Okay, so basically, this is going, the Conex purchase is dead and we're gonna look at revamping what we've got.
It's not necessarily dead.
Right now, okay. So we're not actually tabling it and not bringing this particular item forward, just looking for additional information?
When you bring it up again, we'll do a search.
Next.
Moving on to eight dash twelve, review discussion, possible action by the council to consider hiring a candidate for the court slash water sewer court position. This closed session was adjourned at nine nineteen PM and no official action or vote was conducted during the closed session.
Anyway, I'll have the right to discuss. If we so choose.
We're open for discussion on the consideration to hire a candidate for the court, water sewer.
I've only just seen these resumes. I asked to see them yesterday. I've asked to see lots of resumes for the last month. I haven't seen any. So I have a hard time making any decision or any evaluation. So, I have a problem with the process.
I wish to have a better grasp on the budget before I spin one.
We are essentially select, accepting the selection of the outgoing city secretary. In my view, in my view. That's my view.
We'll make a motion to hire Bernice Lee, what a minister of court and utility business positions. I think it's a... Offer is an eighteen that she's already making and that the position was paid prior.
All in favor of hiring Bernice Lipron at eighteen dollars an hour? Against?
Nay.
Motion was passed?
We are John.
Wait.
Make a motion to adjourn? I second it. And all in favor?